All right, everyone, it is 6:33 in the evening of November 18th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. We'll call a meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Please sign the sheet that's going around on the clipboard so we make sure we have the names of all those that are in attendance. Thank you. This time I'll roll call council members. Councilmember Gilman.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Batchery.
Here.
All council members are present. Also at the table on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. With that out of the way, I would entertain a motion or ask if there are any changes in the agenda, any additions. I do have one item I want to question in regard to the bills, so I would ask that if bills are approved in the consent agenda that they be approved without inclusion of the McLeod Co-op power bill. We'll deal with that one in our new business. So I think we can go ahead with the consent agenda and just approve the bills less the McLeod Co-op power.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. And then the consent agenda that you have in front of you. The consent agenda this evening consists of these following items. October 30th, 2019 workshop meeting minutes. October, or November 4th, 2019 workshop meeting minutes. Item C, approval of Scott Equipment Company's application for fireworks, pyrotechnics, special effects on Saturday, December 7th, 2019 as part of the 2019 Arledazzle event. Item D, approval of the request to close Main Street from Highway 5 to County Road 17, Fourth Avenue, from noon to 9:00 PM on Saturday, December 7th, 2019, also an Arledazzle event. And then lastly, item E, the bills, again, not including the McLeod Co-op power bill.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Gilman to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, at this time I would recess the city council meeting and open the public hearing in regard to the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project Assessment Hearing. City Administrator Melvin.
Councilmembers, this is an opportunity for the public to come forward. We did have a meeting prior to the project, at which time we did talk about the assessments. Since that time, the assessments have gone down slightly. We have provided notice to all the homeowners that are being impacted by that. As you will recall, our initial bid came in higher. We then had City Engineer Jason Femrite do some value engineering. He went back and then had some discussions with Mueller. They were able to find several areas where costs could be trimmed, and I believe a copy of that should be provided in front of you. There were three different, three different things, I should say, three different things that brought the cost down. One was removal of the sidewalks, which typically are not assessed to property owners, but also they were able to use a different type of oil on the project. They took and used, instead of all cement, they used some poly pipe, which was less expensive. And then they also used a different type of seating. So they were able to reduce the project through those changes. And so that's where now the project has been completed. The assessments have been lowered from what was previously presented to residents. So we're here today if any individuals, residents, would like to speak to the council or have any input on that project and those assessments.
Anyone wish to address the council regarding the street project? Step forward if you do. And I can attest to the fact that the assessments went down. There's one, we have the house along there, and it did go down about 5%, 6%. So I assume that most of them did take a little bit of a decrease.
Correct.
Any questions? Yes? Would you come up and speak? You don't want to do that? How do we, how do you?
My voice can carry a lot of noise.
Okay. Pat, do you want to just address how all these options?
Some of us don't quite understand how it's.
The options you have in paying for.
Paying for?
Mm-hmm.
Like if you can't pay the whole entire amount by the end of the year, right?
Correct.
There will be no interest, right? Or interest whatever?
If you, if you pay it before the end of the year, yes, then you can avoid any of the interest charge. If, if that's not an option, then there will be interest charge and you can make payments over a period of time until that's paid in full.
And that money, and that you have to pay starting January 1st? Where do we pay or who do we pay actually? Do we go to the county?
That will end up on your tax statement.
Do we end up, okay, can you do monthly payments? Or does it have to be done actually when your taxes are due or what?
You'd have to work that out with the county. I think we turn it over to the county, is that right, as far as the special assessment?
The assessment I have in my house, well, my property tax is escrowed, so it's all included in that. So if you escrow it through your mortgage, you know, it'd be included.
Karen, why don't you give us a call and we'll give you all the details?
Russ has.
Russ? Ross, did you just?
Yes, the assessments, I don't know in this case, but usually they're spread out over 10 years as part of your real estate taxes. Real estate taxes are due in the spring and the fall. It used to be that the county would not accept part payments, but my understanding is they changed that policy a couple, three years ago. So if you wanted to offer monthly payments on your real estate taxes to the county, I think they'd take them. They wouldn't apply it specifically to the assessment. They'd apply it to your overall real estate taxes, which the assessment is a part. That's my understanding, anyway. Now, every year you have the opportunity to cut the interest off. If, let's say, in the third year of the assessment, you decide you have a little extra money, you just want to pay it off in full, you can do that in any year. Then, of course, that would cut off the interest, you know, that would otherwise accrue in the future years. Does that make sense?
If you decide to do that, though, you will be paying, if you, that payment has to be made by November 15th, so three, four years down the road. Payment has to be made by November 15th in order to.
November 15th?
November 15th. But if, let's say it's January or February, and you said, gee, I've got this extra money, I'm going to pay that all off. I want to pay that all off. You'll pay interest for the entire year. So if you're going to pay it off, wait till November.
November 15th.
Wait till no later November 15th, but, you know, you might as well take, take advantage of the fact that you.
November 15th is fast, right?
No?
That's future years.
Future years.
Future years.
We're talking a few years down the road if you decide you want to pay it off early rather than continue financing it.
But if you want to pay it in full?
This, this year you have until December 18th of 2019.
December 18th, you can pay it in full.
Through that date, and then anything after that then goes, and basically you work with the county auditor. So the city will accept it through the 18th, and there'll be no interest.
But we can make a partial payment to the 18th, right? What I'm understanding in this.
And then finance the rest?
So, right, yes.
I believe you can.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, sure.
It says we can do that, and then we go from that part?
Yep.
Yep, you'll save that interest on pay.
And we do not, well, when we get our tax statements, like I think we got our tax statement today or whatever it was, so that would be on.
It'll be on there.
Additional?
Yes.
So at that point in time, can we pay more on that? So if my taxes is $3,000, I want to pay $5,000? That would be, go towards that part?
$2,000. What you're saying is that $2,000 could be applied towards your assessment.
I get my payment for $2,000 for my taxes, you know, but I want to pay an additional $2,000. So at that point in time, I can pay additional $2,000 on that tax statement, like, for example, I just got for 2020, whatever it is.
I would just make sure that you communicate that to the county auditor so that she realizes that you're not just.
That I might not make 20 years.
Yep.
It's 10 years.
Documents is 20 years.
None of us pay now.
Documents say 20, I'm sorry.
It's 20.
20 years in the.
Okay, 20 then, yep, yep. And the interest rate is 5%, I believe.
5%?
Yes, correct, 5%.
Will we get any other statements from the county regarding this additional 5%? Like a separate line or something?
You should have received, you should have received a notice, basically, that was mailed out to everybody who has.
This way?
Yes. So if you flip, if you flip to like the, the second page there, it talks about prepayment without interest. It talks about partial payment and talks about interest rate and everything right in there.
Okay.
So if you have questions, feel free to give us a call, and we're happy to talk further.
Okay.
So when, when I was hooked on to the city, we had an assessment probably 10 years ago, and basically the taxes showed what the city's tax was and then what the assessment was, and we were able to pay extra. So we paid it off.
So there's an additional line on that?
Yeah, it showed, it showed both of them.
It showed both of them?
And we essentially just paid extra and paid it off early.
So you could do that? Did you have to?
That's what we did. I didn't.
You didn't have to write?
I don't think we wrote anything. We just sent text to them.
So you didn't have to write an explanation and I'm sending another $2,500?
I don't, I don't believe so.
And they take it with all happiness, right?
That was in our case, yeah, yeah. I don't want to tell you how to do it, but that's, I mean, we, we had just.
If you're not going to make it 20 years, you've got to opt in just a little bit, and then you sell your house.
Yeah. Because I haven't paid before you've sold your house.
You don't, just let people take over their payments. You're around with your taxes.
My experience is there's a lien on that.
But that's why you talk to your realtor, and that's the way you pick up.
They could.
You can pick it up or they can.
Either way, it has to be paid off. Either way, it has to be paid off.
By somebody. By somebody. It's either by the seller or by the buyer.
I don't want to get all the way.
It carries over.
It can't.
Okay, any other?
If you're going to get realtor, you don't.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Bodie.
Yeah, if, if I want to pay it off, it says here, pay the city treasurer.
Correct. If you want to pay it off by December 18th, then you would talk to the city. Following that, the city assesses it and turns it over to the county auditor.
So if I want to pay in full, before December 18th, I come and.
Come here.
Right you grab the check.
Yep.
Correct, yeah.
Yep, right to the city office.
Right in the city office?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, don't stop by my house, Dale. I won't take the check. Not that it wouldn't be good, but I don't want to get involved, you know? Any other input, questions? I will ask for a motion to close the hearing pretty soon, if there is anything else. Is there, is there someone? Oh, yes, yes.
Why is this money going to the county if we don't pay it in full?
The county's the collecting agent on it.
They're the ones that collected, collected with your taxes.
So what?
Yeah, it comes back to the city.
Right, right, yeah.
Who gets the interest money? Yeah.
The city.
Well, the city gets the interest money?
Mm-hmm.
And why 5%? Where, how did you come up with that number?
It's an interest rate that we've used in the past for bond projects.
The city has to pay interest on its bond.
Right. But the interest that we earn comes back.
The city has bonded this, the city's paid the contractor already, and that bond, the city has to pay interest on. So if the city is collecting from the citizens over a period of time, then the citizen's interest that's paid helps the city pay its bond interest. Do you follow that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
Yes?
Just one second question, not question, but just a remark or a statement regarding the road work that was done on Clinton Street and everything else. I would like to say thank you if you can relay that on to Mueller and to Jirby's. They were a fantastic group, friendly, waiting, and if you hadn't needed any help or anything else, they were there and say, okay, what can we do for you or how can we do? I would like to thank, if you can pass it on.
I'd be glad to. Yeah, thank you.
Did you give them cookies, Karen?
It did work fast enough.
Anything else?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, yep.
About the alley on Clinton Street that has been used a lot.
You're talking about the one behind your house?
Yes, I am.
Okay, mm-hmm.
And it's underwater part of the town now.
Yeah.
Does the city think it fits in that because some of the neighbors have asked?
Those aren't maintained alleys. I know I've got one right behind my place, too, and there's some deep tracks. I think we're going to have to take that up as a separate issue to see if.
We can talk with the maintenance supervisor about it and see.
No, I think yours is grass also, isn't it, all the way through that way?
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any grading going on, but maybe, maybe filling in of ruts or something like that that have occurred because of the street project. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Cowell to close the hearing for the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project Assessment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you all for, for attending.
Can we maybe just take a minute?
Sure, sure, we'll take a minute. I thought it was 10. I thought it was 10.
Probably because it's so much. It's larger than we've ever done.
Yeah. And you always do have the opportunity to pay it off earlier, so. Yeah, I was thinking of this, because I know our assessment is 13,000 something, and I always thought about 1,300 a year, but guess not.
Well, no, you'll only have to pay 650 a year.
Yeah, plus interest. It's all right.
Turned out. You pay before December 15th?
That's right.
18.
Come out the 19th. You're not going to be happy. Money's no longer good. Not enough.
You'd probably have to pay interest on that first year as well.
You would.
That's where daylight's bad deal.
Yep, you would.
Yeah, more than a dollar short. 13,000.
Just waiting for Pat to rustle up some agendas here. Michelle, I think we're going to go into the electrical rate discussion. Well, I'll just go back to the addressing the council part.
Well, maybe I'll just send the council, I guess, better.
I won't give them enough of time.
Well, if you cover it, first the money addressed, the council, then I guess you know.
Yeah.
Right?
I could do, address the council other than the electrical rates. Then we'll go to the electrical rate.
You guys are missing that, sorry.
I'm going to continue using the one I printed out at home, so if something gets screwed up, you got to holler.
Nope, it won't, because it's the same.
Okay. All right, I know a number of you are here to discuss with us the electrical rates. So at this time, I'm going to ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council on anything other than the electrical rates? Wayne Quest.
I'd like to request a street light down there in front of our new house somewhere. It's so dark down there, you can't see anything at night, not even the driveway going into the place. I think the last street light's up there about 500 feet away, and we don't get any use of that at all. Maybe the center's to the west in front of Iverson's house. That's the last street light until it goes out across the creek there. It really is dark.
Is Iverson's the last house in that stretch before yours?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think there's one right in front of her, right, right.
Somewhere down there, if we can get one, maybe 50, 75 feet from the creek to the bridge there, that would be my guess. It's, it's dark down there. It's.
Yeah, yeah. I have no idea what, what a light would cost or if the, if the council would even want to look into that at all.
I.
Go ahead.
Sorry, interim.
No.
I did send an email inquiring with Kurt Hanson as to how much that would cost, so he is looking into what that cost would be.
Okay, okay.
For the council. So as soon as I get that information, I will certainly share.
Okay.
And communicate back maybe a little bit?
Yeah, yep. Okay, all right. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move forward to, way forward to item, and it's on the item number 11 under unfinished business on the back of your agenda. Discussion regarding proposed 2020 electrical rate increase.
Councilmembers, just to give you a quick update, I have talked with several individuals, and I've heard from, from others, with some concerns about the proposed increases for the electrical fund. As you will recall, we had Avant Energy that came and analyzed, looked more specifically at our current rates. We do have multiple years where we have been unfortunately losing money overall with our electrical program, and based on that, they took, and took a look at our current pay structure, and they put together some recommendations for trying to get us back overall into the green. And so what was included in your packet and what has been shared with a number of residents who have concerns is a copy of that report that Avant put together back on November 5th, 2018. That led to the increase that was done in January of 2019. And we also have another proposed increase, which is yet to be approved, but was proposed for January of 2020. I will have you, if you're looking at the packet, to turn to, I believe it is slide 16, which has the proposed rates, and that's where you can see the changes that are proposed. Just telling you kind of the changes that they did make. They removed, removed the demand charge from customers with a demand below 25 kilowatts, and they increased the overall rates. You can see the residential rates in that top box on the right side, the small commercial, and also the large commercial for those who are over 25 kilowatts. This report went through, and it's got a number of different charts. It's showing where the city of Arlington was prior to the study, and it also shows where the city of Arlington rates, both for commercial as well as residential, after the study. So I would open that up to any questions that you have. I may not be able to answer all of them, but any answer, any questions that I'm not able to answer, I can certainly take back to Avant with more questions. And I know that we do have a number of residents here who would like to provide some input on the proposed increase for 2020 and share with you the impact it has had in 2019, so.
Hey, is there any, anyone wish to come forward and address the council? Slide the microphone over, please, Denise. Make sure it's on, green light.
I run all the rules, I'll be careful.
There you go.
Well, I didn't really understand what was going on with my electrical bill all summer. I thought it was the air conditioning that was costing so much. And then I realized my, one of my bills became to $2,000 in one month, and the electric demand was 208, so it went from $40 to 208. So here, more all year, thinking it was the, the heat and the electric, but here it was the electric demand. And we're wondering why they removed the, the people off the list that don't use more than 25. They should at least pay a base fee of something. Because honestly, on the small business on there, you have the dugout, me, the grocery store, Jim, maybe one or two more, and then we're in with the hospital, the high school, and all that. Just because we use more electricity for the type of business we have doesn't mean we make more money than the other, the small businesses. So it's upsetting that so many got taken off. And on this one line, it says, please, phase rate increase in over two years to reduce impact to customers. Well, it should have maybe been like a five-year thing because the impact is affecting people. And as you know, in the restaurant business, our profit margin isn't that much anyways. I mean, you try to. I mean, you try to raise a glass of beer a quarter and you're, you're all over town with gossip. So I just don't think this was drawn upright, just because it was recommended. And I honestly wonder if the council even knew what they were voting on. And I'd like to ask Jerry how much his bill went up a month.
All right. Obviously, my bill is affected by the demand. My demand went from, I think it was around a hundred dollars to six hundred dollars. Now there's, I guess I, I had opportunity to look back on my bills from last year and. The overall impact was a little less because for whatever reason, the kilowatt charge back in twenty, call it eighteen, was.
A dollar three.
What's that?
A dollar three.
Nine cents, nine cents even.
Okay.
Well, let's see.
But basically what I, you know, I guess I, I had a conversation with the, with Pat there and I guess, I feel that. The one thing that, you know, this study did for you guys is, is, is it laid out a plan for you. Not necessarily realizing what the impact was gonna be on the people involved. And you guys voted on that, and that's, that's okay, but I think the reality of the thing is when you're affecting your business or your town. You better put some consideration on that, I guess, because like she just said, margins aren't the same. Okay? Do you think, we, we all expect our electricity to go up, I think, you have only talked about that. But at what rate? You're, you're taking a pretty good hike and I guess, back to my point, Pat, that, you know, that I made to you was. Just make sure that we're competitive. You know, regardless of what this study told you, you guys need to make sure that we're competitive as a city to pass our electricity rates on to our people. Does that make sense?
Yep.
With the rate increase for twenty twenty, hopefully, hopefully, we'll give that some consideration. Because I think it's gonna push you over by a little bit more than what you may be thinking. We currently have Excel over in Gaylord. And I did some quick math, and we're close. But we're still higher here today than Excel. Regardless of what that study told you, I compared the bills this afternoon. So, you know, just give it some consideration because I, you know, I. I guess that, I don't want to repeat myself.
That's on the current rates, Jerry?
That is correct.
Not on the next year's?
A quarter of a cent per kilowatt higher. Now, that don't sound like a lot. But when you use sixty-eight thousand kilowatts.
A whole bunch.
It's, it's a little bit more money. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Hello, I'm Jim Craft, I own Craft Cabinets at three oh five Fifth Avenue Southwest here in Arlington. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Similar to Ms. Swenson, I was perplexed by the real drastic increase in my electric bill. Not only over this year, but compared to my former facility on Main Street. And I concluded that I had made some mistakes on powering the building, my new facility. But I still couldn't quite figure out what was going on. And I, so I had been examining the viability of having solar added to my building, and it's still didn't quite match. A few weeks ago, I learned about the demand charge. Now, some of that's on me and us for not knowing that, so I'm not blaming the council entirely for, for, for not relaying news that we should have gathered. Just by being good property owners. I, I did examine some, the, the reports similar to the other business owners. And I read, one of the objectives is to be fair across the customer classes. Further in the report, it shows that the commercial segment of the electrical sales is the only one that has been cash flowing. So it seems like the city is waving their hat in front of the biggest donor already. So Ms. Swenson brought up the idea of having a threshold of twenty-five kilowatts to separate large and small commercial users. I feel also that that's unfair. Further, I feel it's unfair, and I would be paying this on the other end, that if I'm at home in the middle of the summer. And have my air conditioner set at sixty-five degrees, I should be paying demand charges on that. Now, I realize that the industry is slowly going that way to having demand charges across the classes. So hopefully, the city council, maybe with help from Avant, could examine that further. As Mr. Han said, nobody's expecting electrical rates to go down. We're reading that Excel is phasing in, or proposing to phase in price increases over the next three years, mostly for infrastructure. So we, we fully understand, or at least I fully understand, that they're not going away. But. In, in the study, Avant has what they call an average large consumer, a large, large commercial consumer greater than twenty-five kilowatts for the demand. That it would increase per year with the proposed rates of hundred and forty-seven dollars per month, per each of those years that it's increased. An average of seven point one percent and six point six percent. My numbers are almost identical to that in the increases I felt from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And doing the math, that's exactly very close to what I beat it. But that's a forty-seven percent increase for my business, despite all the, the already increase on, on my, my mistakes. So maybe sometimes it's easy to consider in a report what an average is without examining what it maybe does do to, to some businesses that. Similar to what Mr. Han said. Lastly, I guess, I'm, I'm really perplexed as to when the rate that we're paying was approved. Can anybody answer that question for me?
It would have been probably the fee schedule at the end of last year.
I, I believe it was done in January. Retro to January first, because a bill had not come, had not come due.
Did Minister Melvin, or Councilmember Cowell, it was not approved in the fee schedule in December. And Minister Melvin, if you're talking about what was approved as Resolution nine twenty nineteen, there are no fees approved in it. Right, if you don't mind, then I will read the entire resolution, that the council hereby approves the additions of a residential energy rate per kilowatt. No fee. Commercial energy charges for small and commercial users, and a demand charge for large commercial users as part of the fee. There are no fees attached to that schedule. There's no definition of what a large and small consumer, commercial consumer is. So I, I guess I'm, I'm really perplexed.
I believe that in the packet, there was that information.
I.
I'm not sure why it would not be included in the minutes, which you're referencing.
What resolution number is that?
Nine twenty nineteen. It was, there was no addendum identified in the resolution and no addendum in the resolution book that's kept at City Hall. And then, to address your idea of, of backdating something, I. That is a difficult thing for me to wrap my head around. If, even if this would have been approved with a fee and with the definition of what a large commercial consumer was. It was dated, it was approved on the seventh of January. The bill that I paid on the fourth of February is for use from December seventeenth of eighteen to January fifteenth of nineteen. So even if the, or if you're considering the approval on that seventh. We paid for at least twenty days, twenty-three days of what should have been the old.
Right.
Fee with the new one. So I guess, I, I, I'm really interested to see what the council addresses this. But I, I'm either. It's, it's very perplexing as to how this was approved. It just does not seem as if it was. It didn't get, didn't allow us to budget for anything. Now, if the city is trying to budget or balance the electrical rates, that's fully, that's, that's proper. But without giving notice, without considering what it do to municipal budget of the, our district, the hospital, approved budgets throughout the year. As well as what Ms. Swenson said to little businesses, which is what we are. If it, it kind of blindsided us. And again, I take some responsibility for that, but. Not all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I guess all I wanna say is, in this one line, it says, phase rate increase in over two years to reduce impact to customers. Well, that didn't work, obviously. And I still wanna get the point across that, why were so many taken off and there's twenty-five that are paying? And when you have like, on Main Street, you have the dugout, me, and the grocery store. And Jim, maybe one or two other small ones in with the hospital, the high school, the Good Samaritan and them. You know, it just doesn't seem right, just because we use more because of the type of business we have. You know, that's what I wanna say. And I didn't notice it, it's my fault too, I didn't pick up on it till about two months ago, when I realized what was going on. I knew the rates were going up, but I didn't know the electrical demand was gonna go up like that, so, thank you.
Thanks Denise.
And maybe at this time, maybe we can reference the, the letter from Jim Amson from Sibley East. And I believe all the council members received a copy of, of this. And Jim was unable to be here tonight because of another event going on, but I've talked with Jim Amson on the phone several times about this. And as you can see from the two-page letter that he provided, he does have some concerns that he wanted you to be aware of. And just to clarify, I know it's dated eleven five, but it was just received today, so I think you may have had a typo on that.
Okay, council, any discussion at this time?
Can we, I know that we, I brought that up two weeks ago, we needed to maybe relook at this. And you talked to Avant, no, wait, you talked to Shannon and Sweeney.
Both.
And I think, yeah, we need those funds. But do those funds have, do we have to do this in two years? Can't this be worked out a different way? I mean, that's not, I didn't read through Shannon and Sweeney's thing that, maybe the dollar amounts are set at such a time, that fund has to be at that amount. But does it have to be there at the end of twenty twenty-one? Or twenty twenty? Or do we have time to work with this a little bit?
I, I guess that the council could certainly make that decision. However, you know, we oftentimes go by Shannon's advice simply because he does have that financial background.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning that, Pat.
So.
What I'm questioning is, is the, and, and I read the response from him. And yeah, we have to have those funds there, but there's no other avenue to do this, any other way? It has to be at their, at Avant's recommendation? We can't have any input in there on change or?
No, I think you certainly can. If you can, if you can come up with a, a way of achieving the same outcome, I think that, yeah, you certainly can.
Well, I think the council probably has to look at that.
That's the most frustrating thing for me, and it's kinda like what they said, is they were blindsided by it. I mean, probably something that we, as a city, as a council, especially since we knew that that.
We should have notified them long in advance.
Was getting hit the hardest.
I agree.
They should have been notified, and this would have been brought up when we had time to do something.
Long before, a month before the new rate goes into effect.
Yep.
Yeah, in hindsight, yes, we should have reached out to all the businesses and just said, you know, we're having a presentation by Avant. You know, please come and listen to their proposed resolution to, you know, increase electrical fees. And then it would have been ideal to have, you know, individuals, Jerry, Jim, Denise, all able to ask questions directly of.
Right, or even after we have approved it.
Yeah.
Because I look at this one sheet with, I don't know what's on there, I never counted it, fifteen to eighteen businesses. And it looks to me like they're bearing the brunt of the majority of this cost. And I don't know that that's fair either. Yeah, I know it's not.
I'm just wondering if we spread it out over a longer period of time, we end up just chasing that moving target. Is there a different way of making it more equitable, spreading it out much more, businesses, individuals, whatever, rather than a longer period of time? Because that's just gonna.
I would agree to that also because.
In other words, repackaging it, sort of, coming up with the same timeline, but repackaging it a little bit.
This.
Yeah.
This list right here is the ones that are really getting hit.
Right.
Nobody else is.
We can take some of the burden off of them.
Take the burden off that list of these.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, whatever there are, the school and Ridgeview and the, the businesses on Main Street with Mr. Craft and. And maybe adding, as they suggested, more to that, maybe into this one. We gotta do something.
Yeah, you know, looking at the under twenty-five, that was something, you know, that, you know, why cut that out? This, this rate, so Lesure, Lesure's rate, I look at our energy bills every month, they're very high. We're talking double digits, six figures. And the demand charge there in early twenty nineteen was like nine dollars and fifty cents. And it jumped to just under fifteen dollars in Lesure. Now, it's very close, our company there uses a lot of electricity. But something, something that I wanted to share with folks that are here, that are paying the, the demand, is that essentially the demand is, is a charge that. This is the way it's been explained to me, that, you know, the people that are generating power have to have, be able to provide that power. And it's like instantaneously, so when we turn on stuff, primarily inductive motors, there's, we pull that power, they have to adjust that automatically. So it's like buying a five hundred horsepower car when you need fifty horsepower to drive back and forth to work. So they adjust that, and that demand charge is there to, to pay for that extra generator or whatever have you. But one thing that you can do as a business owner is, is control the, try to control the on and off of stuff. And I've done this for years, trying to get that under control at our facility. When we have operators hit the start button on, on machines that have, say, fifty to a hundred horsepower, we try to put that in stages. And in our, in, in that town, it's fifteen minutes, so that demand, one time, if you start at, say, two hundred horsepower. And I don't know that you guys have that large equipment, but if you start all of your fans or, or. And I don't know that you guys have that large an equipment, but if you start all of your fans or, or equipment at one time. You pay that rate the entire month, so, um. VFDs are something that, in the industry, that, that many people are doing because it limits, it's a current limit device. So when you, when you hit start instead of across the line, so you're, even a one-horse motor might draw, you know. Ten, fifteen amps on startup, like initially, a VFD will limit that to, say, like two amps. And you have a lower, lower demand charge because of. And I, I don't know if that helps any or not, and, and obviously those are investments and that's, that's kind of stuff that goes over time. But the demand is, um, is a charge that you, you know, your peak demand is, is what you pay the month and, and you may not, uh.
It's just that, all we're doing is turning on lights, we're not turning on no big equipment or anything. And a lot of our stuff is gas, so basically we're turning on lights.
Maybe exhaust fans or, um, you know, converting to LED, if, if you had, say, uh, T twelve bulbs. They use, you know, multiple times the, the newer style lighting. Now, that's obviously an expense and, um.
Well, my new sign outside is LED.
But just, just to share that, that literally Lesure, I just looked at the bill and it was, it was fifteen dollars, uh, per, per kilowatt. And I mean, we've got, you know, the bills there are in the nearing. Right now, they're, we're quite a bit low because our production is down, but, uh.
They hit.
You know, basically a five-dollar increase, uh, just like that, nobody called us unfortunate. I mean, nobody called us as a facility manager, they didn't call me and say, hey, your rate's going up. I don't know that they sent anything out, um, not saying right or wrong, but, um, just from this, I was looking deeper at that. And, and noticed that, that same, same pattern, uh, which is very similar to what this is, about a five-dollar increase. But we're, right now, they're paying, you know, close to fifteen dollars in, in Lesure.
But I think as, as a small town that needs to have a real interest in maintaining business here in town. We need to make sure that these increases, they're inevitable, they're painful, but maybe if we can spread them around a little bit more. So they're still gonna hurt, but maybe they don't hurt.
Quite as bad.
Quite as bad. Yeah.
Well, when you look at the demand charge on the larger, that's a ten ti- uh, the increase times ten in two years.
Yeah.
I don't care what you look at, that is expensive.
Well, that, that most likely was just not keeping up with it.
I know, but the business still has to pay that.
I, I get it, um, but communities around now, the, in the report, it also says the res- residential rate is, is low as well. You know, maybe that's something between the under twenty-five and then more on, onto residential, I don't know.
I think we could relook the whole package.
And I wonder if that isn't something that we can address, you know, lease obviously does a lot of the billing. And can we determine, you know, how much, how much can we add to the residential? And in effect, how much can we shave off of that large group?
That's something that I don't feel comfortable doing. As, I mean, me, like, these people do this, I mean, that's what they do, that's what they specialize in. If you went to them and said, hey, this, this is working, can we adjust it?
Fair.
Different way to make it fair, because I, I mean, I, if we add a dollar to the resident rate, I have no idea what that's gonna do.
What the impact's gonna be on anybody else. I agree, we have to have someone like Avant tell them, hey, we got a problem here, how do we come back with three programs? How can we resolve this and still get to our goal?
Yeah, and it did say to redo it in two years and, you know, maybe we're a year early or whatever and we redo it now. But like you said, give us some options of some choices, so it's more fair.
Well, and how do we know, I mean, I want some guarantees, once we do this and we fix what's wrong, it stays fixed. We're not gonna end up at the same point, you know, another five years down the road or whatever, you know?
I mean, like you've seen in the report, it was two thousand fourteen since we've done anything with the electrical rates.
Right.
That was before me, that was before all of us here, so. And then, and then keeping up with it, it's just like, uh, the other issues that we're running into is. We, we don't fix it and then leave it and, and put it away somewhere, we revisit it every couple of years, I guess. To see if we're staying on top.
There's a couple of people in the audience that.
Yes, yes, Howard.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to say, in Anderson, when we bought those buildings eight years ago. They had, on the water bill, they had a base rate of forty dollars. Now that base rate is seventy-five dollars. Every business, every person in that town pays that seventy-five dollars every month before they get one inch of water. We have three buildings right next to each other, we pay two twenty-five a month because we have to pay for each building. So I'm, I mean, I don't know if I'm all right putting this on the residents, but I sure want it on the other businesses, you know?
And there, there is a base, there's a seventeen-dollar base rate that goes along with all electrical.
Well, the report shows the residential was, you know, I thought it seemed like it was even way under, um, when you look at the chart.
No, our rate, kilowatt hour rates, I think, are very competitive and.
Well, in a, in looking at that, and when we were talking about the report, we, we didn't want to go to the top. Where they said that we probably could go because we're just implementing this. We wanted to stay right around in the middle where we were competitive, that we weren't the lowest one on the, on the block, but we weren't.
The highest either.
Near the highest either.
Yeah.
So I guess that's kind of what we went over, or when, when we went over it, that's what we.
Well, this, this chart here shows residential, uh, and somebody might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but it shows forty percent. You know, about forty-two percent under. Rural res- residential is, uh, probably thirty-one under, um.
Which slider you on, Joe?
Number nine, am I looking at that correct? That, that's the one that stood out to me, that was.
That's our shortage.
Well, as I think back, and I, I will take my share of blame for this. Uh, in late twenty-fourteen, we lost one of our biggest electricity users in town when Seneca moved out. And we really didn't study the rates from there going forward. And, um, I, we should have started raising rates at that time or shortly thereafter. And we, we probably would have ended up where we needed to be, uh, what this is telling us where we need to be. But it just would have been done more gradually, so.
Howard.
Yes, Howard.
Um, one thing I'd like to say too is, yeah, you should have been keeping up on it, but we're in, where was SIPA? Minnesota, what is that League of municipalities? Which is not a very good place to be, but we can't get out of it. One thing you gotta look at is McLeod's charging us, McLeod County or McLeod Co-op. I mean, when they bring people in here, you're paying top rates, you're paying thirty-five, forty bucks an hour per man. I worked for the power company over in Minnesota Valley. And they brought in contractors. I don't know, is Minnesota Valley doing your engineering here? Why can't they look at contractors to come in, these pole change outs, the undergrounds, the stuff like this, and get comparison of the prices? Why are we paying top dollar? I was union, and it made me mad when you brought in non-union contractors, but I'm living here. But, uh, you gotta look at that too, you can't just have McLeod come over here with six men, three trucks, boom, boom, boom. They do our troubleshooting, that's fine. But when you have these projects of changing poles out, putting underground in, let's bring a contractor and get bids from contractors. There's Highline out of, uh, up here, Highline Construction, there's a lot of okay construction. But I think that's one of our things, we're paying top dollar, nothing wrong with McLeod, but we're trying to save money here, you know? So, and I don't know what we make on our electric every year, do we make any money at all?
No, it's, from the chart, we're not making money, we're losing.
Okay, well, you know, another issue is, I know, um, you could sell out to Minnesota Valley or McLeod or something like that. And just tell them, we want a hundred thousand dollar check every year. That way you don't have all the problems, you know, that's a, that's some of the things that's done. Interstate Power sold us, uh, Lee Center and Montgomery, so that's another issue. I don't know if that's feasible, what it is, or you're in that contract with SIPA, I think it's SIPA, not, or Minnesota League.
MMPA.
Minnesota League of.
MMPA.
When I worked here thirty-seven years ago, it was a big mistake. Minnesota Valley over there got stuck in with Great River Energy, they were tied in with them all the time. Well, after so long, they finally got smart and everything new they put in, they went with a place out of Canada. So they started buying power from a different source. I don't know if you guys can do that.
We, we, yeah, we are a member of MMPA.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's about, uh, thirteen different communities that are part of that, including, uh, Elk River.
Shawpee, St. Peter.
Yep.
Yeah, all of that.
And.
And you don't give off-peak programs either, you don't give some kind of breaks on off-peak, you know?
The, the things that they are doing is, they typically do have lower, lower rates than, uh, Excel. And they are really, uh, putting a strong emphasis on looking at renewable energy for their sources of electricity.
I don't have enough time to talk about how I like renewable energy, because they don't work, period. But I think you guys gotta look at your cost of the money you're spending out to do the labor here. That's one of them, so. You know, I just wanna put my two cents, if I was Denise, I'd split my services and have two services. It'd be cheaper to pay the two service charges than is the demand, so, something to think about. Anyway, I thought I'd throw my two cents in, since I do have some buildings uptown and I don't want my rates to come up either, but that's the way it goes. But it should have been watched years back, all you, you know, everything, but.
Yeah, we can do both that now.
Right, but it is with this, you know, I see McLeod coming here with that many guys and it's like, wow, we're paying a big bucks for. I don't know, I think you should get some bids from different contractors, so, save us some money.
Good points.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
So what if we reached out to Avant and had them redo it, I don't know how long that would take, but even if it took into January, I mean, it's only a month out of.
Right.
Or, you know, or, because if, they're supposed to take effect January first.
Well, and I would hope that since they've already done our report, they've, they can cut down on the amount of time it would take. Because they're familiar with our numbers and they've done the analysis, so.
I would think so.
Yeah, because I'd rather.
But do we wanna send some type of a recommendation to them of what we think we want? Like you said, we can change numbers, but we don't know the impact. Have no idea what the impact's.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's, you can see the people that are here and the people that aren't here. I mean, the, this, the big ones, like where you work at, aren't here, I mean, they, that's part of stuff that they expect. It's the, it's kind of that in-between where they're right at that are really close, that it's the hard, hardest.
All of them are, I think everybody's hit hard.
Yeah.
The schools hit harder, whatever too, I think everybody, even residents, were hit with something too. And not as much because they're not as big as consumers as the rest of, as the businesses are typically. But it makes a huge impact, it is hard to do, it was hard to agree or to vote on this when we did. Because I knew it was gonna be a huge impact. But I mean, at that point, not having done anything for what, however many years it was.
Four or five years, yeah. Yep.
And not having anything implemented for demand or whatever at that point, up until that point either. I mean, it was, I felt like I had my hands tied, like there was nothing else that we could do to get ourselves above ground. I mean, instead of being below. But I'm, I'm open to looking and I would like to see us look and see if Avant can look into it. Maybe restructure and have Shannon Sweeney talk.
Yes, Jim.
Thank you. Does Avant or someone else the city would have contact with have resources that could help us examine VFDs? Could help us examine behavior within our businesses? Um, I've been exploring those options and I'm confident they will make a difference. But when I was talking to Lisa City Hall and she's directed me with Justin Coles and McLeod, who's been really helpful. And there's only a certain amount of storage apparently in our meters. So in order to even just answer the question, when is my peak during the month? You know, is it always on Wednesday at three o'clock? That would be huge information for me, but I, we, as I, apparently, that information. Unless there's certain software that's purchased or borrowed or rented, that's not available.
That, that is, that is a good, so, um, in Lesure, three, we have six services in our main plant. And three of those services, I'm able to, I'm able to look in and see right down to the minute. And then I can look at the next lowest one and I've calculated it out to find out what the difference is. I don't know if, uh, if you guys have that kind of meter here and, and it's something we had to pay for. So if we want, like, if I wanted to put the other three services on, we would have to pay for it. I know over there, we work with a EMS, um, out of, uh, Chantahasen that I, that helps us with our rebate programs. And then they, they communicate with the city and I don't know how the city does it here, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I get about thirty thousand dollars a year in rebates to the, to the city of, uh, Lesure. And we tap them out like on the first month of, uh, into the new year and then we just can't file anymore with them. We also, um, have done, uh, engineering studies through, uh, Center Point Energy, who carries our natural gas. Where they, they have rebate programs that, that they send engineers out and they'll pay seventy-five percent of it. Um, and that can go into electrical as well, uh, when, when the engineers there are looking at, you know. Where you're using all of your energy, whether it's heat or electricity. And we've rebated those programs as well, um, whether it was electric or, or natural gas.
But your bill does not indicate what that peak is.
When it is.
Yeah, the time.
That's the demand charge.
Right, I mean, they know what, when that is because they're charging you, so, but they're not sharing that information?
They, they, certain meters, um, like I said.
It is made shared?
Yes, yeah, we're sharing, we don't have the capabilities.
To get in.
To identify exactly when that's occurring.
That would, that's a special meter, like, so we have, at our facility, we have three of the services that are on that. I can log in on the website with an account and any day of the month, I can go in and see exactly what that demand is.
So, yeah, this is all new to me, I don't, I, so I'm, I guess I'm curious if we're charging them a demand fee. But you're saying that we can't pinpoint exactly when that peak is? Then how are we charging the demand?
We can tell them what the demand is, but we can't tell them.
Tell them when.
The date and the time, that it's a specialty meter and software.
Is that, do they, do they have something you can attach to that meter for a, a temporary service for thirty days so they can know?
It's a, it's a company that they work through and, and literally it was gonna be big dollars to add it. Because I wanted to have all of them on there because we're talking major, major, uh.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
I figured they could do it, but yeah, you can't spend a fortune doing that either.
And we, through MMPA, uh, we do have Kim Lilly Blatt, I don't know if you've ever heard her name before, Jim. But, uh, uh, she is the individual who comes out and works with us trying to identify, you know. Efficiencies and different things, I think she would be delighted to sit down and, and talk with you. You know, I don't know that she's gonna have all the information that you request, but she's, she works with a number of other communities. Trying to suggest and work towards getting more efficient use of electricity. So I, I'd be happy to send her contact information to you and if, when she's out here sometime. She could possibly sit down, talk with you and help you out with what you're trying to pursue.
Okay, Jim.
Um, is, is that person, does it regularly, do you know?
Uh, from time to time, she does come out here, yes, so.
And if, I remember a time of my, um, consideration of my solar budget.
A phone call could certainly be.
That would be, thank you very much.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
And then if I could just say one more thing.
Yes.
Back to Michelle's comment about, you know, not knowing and thinking that we had to do. We really do have to do this because our bond, our electrical bond is based on the premise that we're generating a hundred and, a hundred and five or a hundred and ten percent. We have fallen behind that, so we are actually, uh, defaulting on a bond, which leads us to a whole nother problem. And so that is another reason for why we're having to make these increases. And so that is another reason for why we're having to make these increases is that we're guaranteeing when we take on that bond, that we're generating enough money to pay back those.
And then that would affect our bond rating.
Yep.
So what happens then, and I know this sounds like a mess, what happens if we implement this for the time being to save our bond rating? And while, and while we're doing that, we're also researching at the same time, cause that can be changed, correct? That way we keep our bond rating where it is, you know, give us some time to relook at this.
Well, what's, uh, if we're already out of it, what's another month or two? I mean, do you, do you have any idea on what that might be? I, I wouldn't think it would take them very long to reevaluate this. I'll, we're look, say, look, we want.
Yeah, we got five weeks.
Two weeks, maybe two, two other options of what you presented to us. And what might those be?
Yep.
Yeah, if that's a month, then we reevaluate it and, um, now there'd be a whole. If this is lowered for, um, the twenty-five KW and above, it's probably gonna increase it for other people that, that, um.
As I said before, I think we have to, we have to arrive at, at what we need to arrive at to keep our bond rating where, where it should be.
That's what.
It's just we're gonna package it a little different. We have to package it a little different.
But what, I guess, what's that timeline?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly inquire.
But Shannon Sweeney would know that.
I can certainly inquire. I, I will talk to both Shannon as well as David Niles from Avant and inquire with, uh, Avant about doing an additional study based on the feedback that we heard here tonight. Uh, and talk to Shannon, ask him, you know, if we do, if, if we do some of these delayed implementations or if we make adjustments. How is that going to impact our existing bond?
And then can you ask Shannon as well about kind of Tom's point of sprinting out longer?
Yep.
If possible, I mean.
I think he's pretty much addressed that already. Shannon has in his letter. He doesn't, yeah, it's, he's pretty emphatic in saying, hey, you gotta do it. And don't delay.
Yep.
There really wasn't much wiggle room there.
But, but that's a certain number, right? So that, that increase is gonna generate this dollars. What is, you know, uh, not cutting the under twenty-five and, and what about a slight increase to the KWH to residential units? Now that's gonna generate this much. And if it balances out, then, uh, yeah, essentially you're at the same thing in the end.
Right. Just reallocating costs.
We're just spreading the costs out. To throw another wrench in it, maybe there's a, instead of, you know, above twenty-five, what if it's above, uh. What's the next, I mean, what, what's, what's the, I, I would say that most of the folks here were median users or on the small end of, of the, above twenty-five. What's, what's the next range? And is it, uh, you know, twenty thousand or, uh, yeah.
Hey, Northland, we use a lot of power.
Yeah.
We, we do. Um, and but, and I can understand, and Northland stances, we can understand taking the brunt on it there. But also looking at it as a chamber board member, there's some of these businesses that can't take that, they go, they shouldn't have to make that move.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree to have them charge the same as you. It's.
But in the end, we all know one thing, those dollars have to be there.
Correct.
We have no choice. It's just a matter of how we allocate each share. Just in the end, we still have to have that pie spy up there.
Would it be possible to get a motion on something we've talked about? You talked about having Avant come back in. Is that what you, uh, would like to see? Anyone wanna? So we can move off and move on to someone else? We've got a lot of agenda left.
Do they really have to come in or do they just, they've already got this? They already have all the information or just saying, you know, you gave us one exam?
Bring it up today.
What's, this is A, what's B, what's C, what's D?
Make a motion?
That sounds like it.
That's my motion.
I'll second that. We're done.
So basically, it would be just contacting Avant, asking them to come up with, uh, current figures and a number of options.
To get to the same place.
Is that, to get the same place?
Yeah, to somehow lighten the load to that group.
And who seconded it, Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's assuming that there is no additional cost involved in. Or, I just wanna.
Well, they're probably gonna charge.
They're gonna charge the bond.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't, they're not gonna do it for free.
Oh, okay, I was, that's, okay, yes.
I assume there will be a charge.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Maybe they were already, you know, maybe that was something that was already on their mind and this is what they chose, right?
Yep. Okay, a motion by Councilmember Morgan, seconded by Councilmember Haddelstedt to contact Avant Energy to, um, um, bring our, or to. How should I word it?
Restructure.
Restructure and bring back additional options, but to end up with the same.
Same end goal.
Same end goal, same, uh, yeah.
Can, can we add to that, that, um, we also include Shannon Sweeney in on that as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? I know it's convoluted, but it's there. If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. All right. Looking back to page one, um, item seven announcements.
Councilmembers, we have.
Sorry, that was me.
We have, uh, kind of lost track here. We have, uh, coming up on, coming up on November twenty-first at seven PM here at the community center. We have Brett Nelson, a community health planner with Meeker, uh, McCloud Sibley Community Health Services. He will be putting on a presentation, vaping, how much do you know? This again will be a presentation hosted by Arlington Lions Club, uh, here at the Arlington Community Center on Thursday, November twenty-first at seven o'clock. Free presentation. Second announcement is that we have the truth and taxation hearing, which is coming up on December second here at six o'clock. In the council chambers, at that time, we'll be reviewing the budget and individuals will be invited to express their opinions on the budget. And to better understand what factors are driving costs. Uh, we have the Arlet dazzle designer perspangle scheduled for December sixth, uh, here at the Arlington Community Center. Their doors will open at four o'clock, card sales begin at five, and then the game at six thirty. You have to be eighteen years old and present a photo ID. This is presented by the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. The Arlington Chamber of Commerce raffle, uh, over twenty-five prizes with a retail value exceeding five thousand. You can purchase those raffle tickets right here at the, uh, city hall. A big thank you to eighteen local businesses and all the chamber members who have contributed prizes for the raffle. Next item is the Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition. They have a meeting coming up on Friday, December thirteenth at seven thirty in the morning to nine o'clock at Chaska City Hall. They will be discussing a federal bill grant application, updating individuals on the work of two twelve and other state and federal related issues. The Arlington Conquerors four-H Club is looking for new members, inviting anybody from kindergarten through grade twelve to come check them out. They meet on the second Sunday of the month at six PM at the Lions Center Building at Four Seasons Park. So individuals are invited to come check them out and consider joining. The Salvation Army is looking for bell ringers. Uh, bell ringing sites will be Jerry's Home Quality Foods, uh, in both Arlington and Gaylord. If you are willing to volunteer for information, contact Stacy at five oh seven, three eight one, seven five four four. The last item under announcements is just, uh, some advertising for BizLink North. For individuals who are looking to, uh, purchase the business, there are many wonderful businesses in Sibley County. To find out more about them, please go to bizlinknorth.com.
Okay, any questions on the announcements? Hearing none, and move on to communications.
First item included in your packet, council members, is a letter from, uh, Sibley's Superintendent, uh, Jim Amston. As you can see, uh, there's some history there about the tennis courts. Michelle, feel free to jump in at any point here. Uh, previously, the city participated with the school district in, uh, building the tennis courts. Uh, the city built them and then the Sibley School District took care of maintaining them. In my discussions with, uh, Jim, he's indicated that, uh, over that period of time, he's, they probably spent about forty to fifty thousand dollars in maintenance of the, uh, courts. That includes replacing nets, wind screens, uh, doing crack filling and other things to maintain, uh, the courts. They are, at this point, looking at those courts which have, uh, reached the effective end of the court's life cycle. And they are looking to address that issue and hoping that the city of Arlington will partner with them in doing that. They have gone out and sought the help of Larson Engineering, uh, who works on tennis court rehabilitation. They have submitted a proposal and what Jim is asking for is for a group, uh, from the city to, uh, sit down and meet with, uh, some school individuals. To start talking a little bit about this, uh, uh, project. I can briefly tell you that there are two options that, uh, that Larson Engineering has provided, uh, the school with. One of those options is a more complete and thorough, uh, project, which would be, uh, two pores. Uh, basically a cement, uh, curb around the outside of the tennis courts. For future replacement then, uh, individual would not have as much work involved. Uh, that is going to be more expensive, um, than the, uh, first, uh, project. Which would be just simply to go ahead and tear out and replace, uh, with asphalt. So you can see on the last page there, you have option one, which is basically digging it up and then rebuilding it. And then alternate one, which is putting the curb in there and providing, uh, for, for easier future replacement of the tennis court. Jim does have listed on page three, uh, the first part of the phase, uh, construction documents at eleven thousand five hundred. Bidding at a thousand and construction administration at seven thousand. One of the options is that the city and the school district just simply go through this, uh, phase one for nineteen thousand five hundred. And, uh, we may decide at that point that it's not feasible or we may decide to take a different, uh, route going forward. But, uh, at this point, Jim would certainly welcome any commitment that you wanna make to that first phase. And certainly does hope that, uh, the city is willing to have some individuals who will sit down and, and continue to communicate with the school about going forward with this.
I see he is asking for a meeting to take place soon. Um, might it be appropriate to, um, assign this to the Parks Committee?
That's it. Parks or streets?
Parks or streets and let them do the meeting with the school dis, with the school district reps and come back to the council with a recommendation?
Certainly could.
Which does the council feel be appropriate? Parks Committee? Couple people from the Parks Committee, couple people from.
Well, how many do they want?
Well, just have the pro, the appropriate.
So you wanna take one from Parks and one from Streets and?
Maybe Kirby or something?
And then Kirby included, that's three people.
That's three people? Does that sound good?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I know our budget cycles are different, but to get, to get this for twenty twenty and November.
Right, and I mean, I know that they, it's unplayable, the tennis court is. So they have, they have to do something.
Isn't it a school thing? I mean, this is not.
Well, I'll agree with you a hundred percent. I'm so against this thing. It's a school project.
Well, this is, okay, we'll stop right there and if the council doesn't feel the city should have any part in it.
I personally can't support it. I can't, I'll never be able to support it.
Well, the thing is, is that we used to have community tennis courts in town. And the council twenty years ago or whatever decided that it would be nice to have a bigger fist, move them, cause they were.
Uh, no, I, I.
Past their life cycle then and put them out there.
I, I think the school should have it, but there's, we have, how many parks in town, there's, that's, that's a school tennis court. It's not a park-friendly area for all citizens to go, uh, and play tennis on. It's just, uh, to me, it's, it's the schools, um, it was a great thing for the city to pay for it, but I can't support paying for their tennis court. I, I, I think it's, it's on their budget.
Are the courts open to the public? Are they available?
Yes.
Yes.
They are. So it's just a matter of people not knowing that or not using it?
No, people use it.
People do use it.
Oh, yeah.
Very few.
There's not many that, it's very few that use it. It's not with the traffic.
That are on the tennis team and again, it's the school tennis court.
I'd say it's more tennis team people from what I can see from my house than.
If I was on the board, I would have to share my opinion on it, I guess. I, I, I don't think that, uh, the taxpayers now. If the school uses their budget to fund their tennis court, great, um, but it's, you know, it's not at, you know, Four Seasons Park. Um, it's not a, it's not a court where, you know, we're responsible as the city, in, in my opinion.
Attorney Arnison, did you wanna share a little history on that if you?
Well, you, you've already mentioned it.
Okay.
Me and the city participated in the first place was, we had some falling apart tennis courts over at Four Seasons Park. And, uh, so it was looked on as kind of a joint city-school project to create the new tennis courts. And I think the three was that it was going to be school tennis court, but also community tennis court. I'm sure no study was ever done, but I live in the neighborhood. I don't see a lot of people using the tennis courts in the evenings. They do seem to keep the lights on in the summertime and there's nobody there. But that's, but that's anecdotal. You know, I, I don't have anybody's, uh, taking attendance over there.
Well, to determine whether we're gonna move on with this with our support or not, uh, I would entertain a motion on that topic.
I'll make a motion to not support it.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay. More discussion.
I would like to see us do something. I mean, not necessarily flip the build and build a new one or anything like that, but at least keep it, um, within the community. I mean, if we have healthy initiatives that come from the hospital funds. I mean, if we could put some of those monies aside and, and, we talk about aging in place. What are, I mean, we have to have other opportunities for people to do. Not everybody likes to walk, not everybody likes to play tennis. Not everybody goes to the park and does whatever, right? So variety of opportunities for people.
I agree. And moving forward, we don't know what people are going to want or not want, but there may be more people that decide they want a tennis court. It's like, it's like making the decision to not maintain sidewalks. I don't think that's very, you know, forward-thinking. And I think letting go of the, you know, not supporting the tennis courts might not be as forward-thinking as we need to be. Looking forward into, um, the future of, of Arlington. I think it's a good idea to maintain these things.
And I might maybe be a little strong to just a hundred percent say not support it, but again, it's November of our budget cycle. We're three quarters of the way through and they want something for calendar year twenty twenty. I mean, that, if, if it was twenty twenty-one, maybe we could sit down and, and maybe there could be something. But I don't see any way where we can come up. I mean, we have, we already have fire suits. We have other stuff that, to me, is more important to the city for the coming year than the tennis courts.
I, I agree with you. I, we have our plate. I, I agree with you. We have our plates full. But in years past, what we built, the city built the tennis courts previously, twenty years ago, right? And the school did the maintenance over on them over the last twenty years. Probably spent forty thousand dollars. I mean, maybe we just flop. They can, they can build the tennis court this time, and we help with the maintenance on it, maintenance costs. You get twenty years, you know, five, ten thousand dollars a year, something like that, less than that, right? Two, but I can't, can't think of a good name.
Is the school district in a position to be able to finance this?
Um, they have.
Independently?
Yeah, they have bonds that they would do, I'm sure. I mean, at least, I mean, I don't want, I can't, I can't say that I, I don't support this at all. I absolutely do, doing some kind of partnership, support, some kind of partnership. I don't know exactly what that would look like.
Okay, we're going to call the question that is to not get involved with supporting the tennis court renovation at this time. Motion was by Councilmember Hattlestead, seconded by Councilmember Morgan. Any further discussion, items that haven't been brought up yet? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
No.
Motion carries three to two. We can always revisit it down the road, but for this, for our budget cycle.
Right, I guess that might be a good, better way.
Can, can we schedule a meeting and maybe start having talks? What do you guys think of that?
I'll be real honest, and I'm, I'm not really in for paying for tennis courts. And part of my problem is, is with the SRO at the school. And the city picks up the whole tab, and the school doesn't pay a quarter. But yet I believe they get some funding for it, but they choose to use it elsewhere. I have a problem with that. So when they come back to me to ask for money for the school, that's where I get bound up. That's just being honest.
I think the idea that you had, though, of flipping it, and, you know, the city takes on the maintenance instead of actually paying for the reconstruction of it makes some sense. At least we're still contributing, at least we're still involved in maintaining that, but not taking on as much of the expense as we might have.
Okay, well, future discussion. I'm going to continue with communication.
Moving on to the next item is a letter, again, from Sibley Superintendent Jim Amston, just regarding the snow plowing. I think that Michelle had brought this up, but a previous meeting that when we were looking at the snowplow rates for twenty twenty, and we had grouped all of the school district lots into one category, is a large one. Jim is, is asking that we break that down into individual parking lots, which makes sense, because if there is a situation where he would like to have the city pick up some of those lots, it may be the south lot, but not, but not the north lot, or the maintenance, or something like that. So I think that I've talked with Kirby, and I've talked with Lisa, and I think that we have put together some numbers to break that down. Our numbers may not be exactly the same as Jim's, but I think that in talking with Jim, I think we can come to agreement on, overall, it's in the same ballpark. We can present that to him, and I think that there'll be agreement on what those numbers are. So I'll certainly take any council input on that, but I think that's probably something that we can work out.
Kirby has no problem with this, none, no, no questions at all, he's fine.
He does not have a problem with it. When, when they need, when they need him to help out, if he has to do something, he recognizes that, you know, at least it's not going to be as often as he was doing previously. But from time to time, he's willing to pick up some of those lots.
Probably takes the load off of him, the workload off of him.
And the issue with the church getting built for part of it is something that should be happening from now on?
Well, the church won't be built for it. Right now, it's the, the school district that has, they have an agreement with, for that property. But once that expires, Jim, Jim's point was well-taken, that it should not be listed as a school district parking lot.
Okay.
It's one that they are currently leasing, and I think they have a year or two left on it. When that does expire, those costs will go to the church and not to the school district. So.
And I think his proposals for the north-south and the shop lot are seem right in line with what the rest of it is. You know, I don't know about the other two, because I don't have numbers, so. And he may not either, since the school doesn't technically own them.
So do you need any, do you need any council action at this time? Do you think it's going to be worked out, okay?
I think if, if you're comfortable with administration just continuing to dialogue with Superintendent Amston, that we can reach an agreement on what those numbers are and have a document to present in the future.
Okay.
Next, next item?
Matt? Matt? Matt, you want to give us an update, is from your perspective, on the Northland Drying?
All right, Matt Nelson, Northland Drying. Basically, kind of what's been going on at Northland Drying. On the thirteenth of November, we shut down our night operations. We shut down our night operations, because we had found that our silencer was broken. I mean, basically, in just layman's terms, it was, it was no longer working properly, which resulted in the higher decibels throughout town that you guys were getting complaints on, that the citizens were upset about. So we shut down our night operations, went to work, working with, I know Councilmember Morgan, we brought in, and he gave us some, some ideas inside the plant on what to do for lowering decibel levels. We worked with a couple firms out of the, out of the metro, and then OEM services over in Green Isle. And we engineered a new silencer. Now, if anybody hasn't, and the printer was running out of ink, so some of these pictures look a little funny, but go ahead and pass them around. Pass them around that way, too, just so that everybody can kind of take a look. The silencer, what it does is it's basically a large muffler. They, they are, they're all on one sheet there. I just wanted to make sure everybody got one. The first two pictures are the old silencer. Then the third picture there on top is what, what the stack looked like without the silencer. On the second row, I'll get back to that, that first one. But the next three pitch, the last three pictures there, that's the new silencer and going into place up there. One of the things, what the silencer does is coming out of the fan, which you see that white building there, that's the building that Northland Drying built around their, their fan. What, what you see is that stack that comes up. That wind is coming out of there, and it's, it's turbulent, and it's, and it's spinning around. What you are looking at in the middle picture on the far-left side is looking at the inside of that silencer. One of the things that's just kind of neat, so I wanted to explain to you guys. Those are all small holes on the four sides of that. What happens is that wind, when it's turbulating out of the stack, it goes into those holes. Inside those holes, now that's where you have your baffles and your insulation and everything that tones the sound down. On the Hold, let me take you back. I think I said those dates wrong on there, too. Anyhow, last Wednesday, we turned everything back on, had Chief Pedersen, no, it wasn't Chief, he was gone. It was Officer Bailey came out and did some immediate checks. Wanted to see where we were at with the new silencer. She did some checks, made sure that we were underneath the fifty decibels. Then we had some talks, put some calls into the MPCA. Then that night, we had decided that we were going to run that night, because we were underneath the fifty-decibel level. Officer Bailey did another test that evening, and we were underneath the fifty-decibel level again. And we have been since then. And we plan to continue running at night. In talking with Chief Pedersen, we have set up, you know, if there is complaints, let, let me know. I'll be, I am the point of contact, so let me know with the complaint, you know, that we've had a complaint. We'll get it tested, and if we, if we find that, yep, we're running too, too high a decibel level, we're going to shut down at night until we get it fixed. And once we get it fixed, then we'll look at bringing it back up again. I, I believe that's what the city's kind of wanted all along. And I'm hoping that this is kind of showing that Northland Drying is, you know, trying to work on a good relationship with the city. Essentially why I was brought here, my Northland Drying brought me in. And in the matter of, you know, the first month, being an employee with Northland Drying, I think we've taken a good, a big step forward. Some of the things that we are working on, I wanted to bring a noise management plan to present to the council tonight. I was told not to bring that quite yet. We are in the works of doing it. The Northland's attorney wants to make sure that everything is, is proper, and at first, she's out of the country right now. So we're going to hold off on that. As soon as that gets finalized, I will get that over to you, so that you guys can kind of take a look at it. In the plan, basically, it talks about other steps that we can do, that we plan to do to keep the noise level down. How we're going to implement, I'll, I'll have Seth get the employees, basically, to implement noise checks. You know, going outside, going over to Rich Miller's property over there, and, and checking on the noise at least each shift. So that way, we can monitor what's going on with our silencer, and making sure that we're underneath the recommended, or the, not even recommended, the MPCA levels. Any questions?
How long have you been running that night?
Uh, since, well, we ran last Wednesday night. We did not run Thursday night, and then we ran again last Friday night.
Has there been any complaints?
No.
No?
So you're saying, then, that replacing the silencer is essentially what has, has brought the noise level down, right?
That is the big thing.
That's the biggest thing?
That's, that's the big thing.
And what, what caused the initial, the original silencer to break, do you know?
Not officially. We, now, this happened before I was there, but what I've, yeah, I It got, that first one got rushed to be made. They, originally, the plant, the company that made it asked for eight weeks. They didn't get eight weeks to get it put in. So it got rushed and it got put in. It, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a battle on whose fault is that? Is that us for rushing them, or is it, you know, just a poor, poorly-made silencer? Right now, I got to do, you know, tip of the hat to, you know, a local company, Green Isle. You know, OEM services, they did a great job at putting this silencer together in a very quick turnaround. I mean, they put it together in three weeks for us.
So you don't feel like the rush issue is, again, going to be a problem?
This, this one, what, what, what they went together and did is they actually built this one so that the sides can come off, and we can do. Some of the things that happen, if you look at the one picture in the middle and the far-left, where you're looking inside it, is that can actually get caked with, whether it's soot or debris, stuff that, when the plant's not running, comes in from the outside, and it fills those little holes. Obviously, that causes a problem. So there's certain times, and that's why we're, one of the reasons why we're going to continue to monitor so close our DB level, is because if that starts to climb, that's an indication that something's going wrong with the silencer. Also, the, the two sides come off, so that the insulation and stuff can be cleaned in there and replaced if it needs to be. This, this one's a much better designed and planned for more of a long-term. You know, we can do preventative maintenance on it, and, and a much better.
So is the perforated plate inside of this, is that stainless steel, or is that just standard?
No, I believe that, I believe that that is all stainless inside there.
So, yeah, I would say one of my observations is that potatoes are potentially having acidic in it. So any regular steel, you introduce that to it along with some heat, and you're going to get, you know, a breakdown of the material.
I did have pictures of what the old one looked like inside. I didn't bring those, they weren't, weren't very appealing.
And do you still have plans to bring ESI out?
As of now, really, we don't. Yeah, I talked with ESI today. I mean, Northland's thought process is we can bring them out, we've been working with them, we can bring them out. They will need a lead time to come out. There's costs that's associated to that, that I don't know if it's really necessary when, you know, we're, we're underneath the MPCAs' level. Bringing in a, another, you know, a third party, just to, just to verify it again, is, you know, maybe a little bit of overkill, or it's, I believe it is, but, you know, it's, um, Northland does not have it in their plans to bring them out right now.
I have two questions. The first one is, and maybe Attorney Ernestson could help me, I didn't have time to look it up. When we sent a letter to Northland suggesting what the city would like to see, was any of that followed, the procedure, or just parts of it?
Well, to recap, the city had requested that Northland bring ESI out to do a study of the facilities and make recommendations for long-term fixes, and also conduct random tests to see if the fixes kept the operation under the legal noise levels. And the alternative was, the city was going to seek a court abatement, which would, in essence, shut the operation down until or unless the standards were met. And we had requested that they shut down at night while these other things were implemented. They did shut down at night, but I think the other requests the city made have not been addressed.
Correct, and that's my concern. They fired up, started running, and everything we asked for, I'm not sure they followed through much of any of it. And the other part I really didn't like, or don't care for, is when we were doing, or the police department was doing the testing before all this started, our numbers were no good. Now that the police department does it, and the numbers are underneath fifty, they have wonderful numbers. How does that work? If the numbers work for us, we like them. When we don't like them, you need to give it other stuff and other testing. I really have issues with that. I mean, everything we asked for, really, nothing fell through. I'm happy the silencer's up, but we had all these agreements in place, Northland started running, and nothing was followed. That's kind of the problem we've had from the get-go with Northland.
The problem is, is that letter that came out, asking us to shut down at night, there was no agreement there.
There was right before that.
There, there was no agreement from that letter.
And Northland never liked their numbers, and oh, oh, we're, we're under fifty.
Well, we can argue about whether the numbers are good or not, but the numbers now are under fifty.
I understand what I'm saying. If the number was a forty-seven, that's wonderful. But before this all started, when the police department did the testing, well, we don't like those numbers, because your equipment's probably wrong. But before this all started, when the police department did the testing, oh, well, we don't like those numbers 'cause your equipment's probably wrong. Now our equipment's perfect. I don't understand that thinking. It can't, you can't have it both ways.
I'm not asking you to have it both ways, but if you're trusting that fifty number then and you're not gonna trust it now, I'll bring ESI in. I understand that. I understand that. And now Northland's saying.
Was the problem. But here's the thing. You went and started that all up with ever doing what, as Ross said, to bring ESI in, have that testing.
We never agreed to do any of that. We never agreed to do any.
Any of that.
There is not one letter from our attorney that agrees to that.
Uh there was no agreement. I think uh the impression the city has had is that Northland uh acceded to our demand to shut down at night um to avoid the alternative, uh the city's action to go with a court abatement action. And uh they didn't acknowledge that. They said they were shutting down at night uh as a gesture of goodwill to the community. So uh there was no agreement. There was a city demand. Um Northland partially responded.
I can tell you exactly how it went down. I started on the twenty-first of the month. That was your guys' council meeting where you guys came up with that.
I know how it went down then.
No, I'm.
So let me ask you this.
No, let me finish, huh? All right. The very next day, I decided that I was still going to go about the same process that I had planned out with Northland Drying. I sat in the patrol car with Chief Pedersen and we went around and did tests around town and he showed me what some of the complaints were and what was going on. From there, I contacted Northland Drying's uh Board of Directors and said, you know what? Firsthand, I've seen it, there is an issue. Northland Drying then tore into their stack, found that the silencer was completely shot and shut down.
Josh told us before that, that the, that the stack was.
You haven't talked to Josh, but, or before that, you're saying that the stack.
Was cracked.
The stack was cracked.
Because the, the unit that held it in place wasn't built strong enough and those cracked and that caused the crack on that. So yes, that was cracked probably before.
I'm not talking about the crack. I'm talking about the inside was shot. It's still out there if you wanna go take a look at it.
Well, I'm just going by what I was told out there.
Right. No, they've had other problems and they've fixed it or they've tried to fix it at other times.
So in the future now, if, if the police take a test for four days straight, January seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, and you are over the nighttime fifty decibel, you will sign a statement saying that you will accept those numbers from the police department?
Yeah, uh it will.
Then I find the police readings. Northland's willing to sign that. Cause my fear is.
That is all part of the management plan that I will be presenting to the city.
Seen that, so I.
Well, like I said, I, that's, that's something that the city and us will, you guys will see it and then we, we can agree upon it.
I think, I think what I, the, the frustration that I, that I see um on the part of the council and I wasn't here to, to go through that was what seems to be sort of some, some broken promises. Now, if the very first complaint, this thing would have been checked into and, you know, and been resolved way back then, um it, you know, we probably wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. It probably would not have gotten elevated to the point where it was, you know, saying, hey, you need to bring somebody in. So from what I hear, Northland was like, no, we don't have a problem. Our, your numbers are bad. You know, everything is good here. Uh and that's why I went to that level. If, if, if Northland would have taken ownership of it at that point, resolved the issue, we wouldn't be here talking. So I think that's where Tom is maybe, is maybe getting frustrated and, and uh, and that's how it got to that level. I mean, if, if, if they dealt with it and, and it became quiet and nobody was complaining, there'd be no reason to say, hey, you need to have OSI evaluate this and come up with something.
And I think that's exactly what has to happen going forward, is that they take care of the problem immediately and.
Yeah, but what is the long-term maintenance plan here? I mean, it's fixed for now. How does it stay fixed?
Right now, it's a matter of monitoring, I mean, monitoring those decibels to see where they're at.
And how often uh will they be monitored? Who's monitoring? You, the police?
Be us. I'm going to pick up a, a, a new meter tomorrow. I'm going over to pick it up tomorrow.
And how often will you actually monitor?
As of right now, it'll be twice a day. It'll be once during the day, once during the evening, you know.
And if there are future expansion plans, how do we deal with this potential issue coming up again if you do expand? I mean, is that going to increase the probability of this problem returning?
Not of returning. I, it, it does increase the possibility of a problem. But what I'm trying to show as an example here is how yeah, I realize it was not in the timeframe that you guys would have liked, but I'm dealing with a month and a month is a timeframe that I think you guys can handle, where we had an issue, had a problem, found the problem, got it fixed and got it up and running again. Now, that, I, I understand, uh Councilman, remember, Tom, uh, just Tom. I, I, I understand Tom's frustration. I do. I understand all of your frustration. I understand all the frustrations to the city folk in this town. Um I do. And that was one of the things that I sat with Pat and I sat with, with the mayor and I sat around and talked with them when I initially first started saying, I'm gonna tackle this, I'm gonna take care of this. And uh I, I can't take all the credit for it. I'm not trying to. I don't know that there's credit to be given because it should have happened earlier. I understand that. But it is where it needs to be now. And we have steps, we have plans in place. There are steps there to keep it where it needs to be.
Matt, you threw out the figure, we're below fifty, below the decibel level. How much? I mean, are you working on a, do you have five or six points below?
Uh it ranges.
Just one or two?
I, it ranges and I think Chief Pedersen will show you, but they, they range anywhere from forty-seven up to the forty-nine. They do. Um now, the thing is, is, is the decibel, the decibel readings and something, it, it, the more I dig into it, the more I, I, I know, but I, I, I try to know. Um the decibel readings really being forty-seven-ish is a, is, is a considerably amount below that fifty. It's a matter, our tone that goes out there, uh is, is a constant tone. It's not a variable. We don't have peaks and, you know, everybody, when they hear that hum out there, they know what it is. You know, it's a matter of keeping that hum as quiet as we can and that's what keeps it below the fifty. Um if it was throughout the day bouncing up closer to that forty-nine, then we'd have an issue 'cause we know we'd be bouncing over fifty once in a while. During the day, it's okay, but honestly, we should be under it during the day because it's the same tone at night. You know, the only difference would be during the day, we got truck traffic and skid steers and things like that. Yeah.
Chief, you have any concerns so far with what you've seen?
Over the last week, it's been a very acceptable um level. We haven't had any complaints. We've been doing testing during the day and at the evening time. I took the MPCA device up to MPCA today. They downloaded and they sent back um files that we had collected and none of them were any concerned with MPCA on the noise levels. I'm still waiting to hear back from the um, the two other areas that do the, like the ground contamination and the air particles. Um but it doesn't seem as those are such an issue either, just by lack of information coming back to me. They, they don't seem like they're all over that. But our results have been very steady between what Matt's saying, the forty-seven, forty-nine. Um we can't figure out why there's even that difference. Some of it has to be related to wind temperature, the amount of heat that they're putting to the device as it's coming out. Um so there has to be a little bit of fluctuation in just some of those elements that change, so.
It's, it's quiet right now. I drove down there the other, or the other morning about five thirty for coffee and I had, at first I wrote my window down. I couldn't hear it. Then I turned my fan off. I couldn't hear it. I shut my truck off and then I think I heard it. So it's better without it out.
You know, the one thing about the, the device and the concern for either entity having to spend money for ESI coming down, um talking with Matt, he's looking at buying the same device that MPCA is using and it'll have to be calibrated. It'll have to meet those same standards. Um the MPCA won't accept any of the readings, I don't think, from them unless it's their device anyways. So if our um, if our self-calibrated units from Arlington, me and Amy and um our other residents that are toned into this, this whole sound, I think even all of us on the police department can pretty much walk outside the door and say, whoa, that's louder today. Without the instrument, we could go up to MPCA and get it again and we could do some, some more.
Well, I don't, you know, and, and that's why I talked about the unit that the city purchased. I don't have a problem with using that as long as Northland Drying has no, it, it's gonna save everybody money if we have to do testing. Because we know what we paid ESI, a lot of money. And if we all agree that we can use that one piece of equipment with you calibrating it against MPCAs or whatever, I'm all, I'm all in on that. It saves everybody money.
And I think, you know, I've overheard some of the conversation Matt's been having about this agreement. And if that agreement can be encompassing of all of those issues we've had, we've all been beating our head against the wall about Northland's not listening to what we're saying. Um and, you know, Matt has shown, I think, in the last month that there's been some considerable cooperation, at least with our department, and then we're seeing results.
I agree.
So.
Because before Matt, we had nothing.
Well, right, and.
Absolutely nothing.
I do have to say that I appreciate the fact that there's a document that we'll see pretty soon uh regarding what you're gonna do and um if it's too loud and that you're gonna check. That's something I agree with Matt before.
Everybody should have that by the next council meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, and, I mean, I see that you guys are trying to put your best foot forward now, which I've never seen before. So I do appreciate that. And I appreciate you shutting down when the noise was too, too loud.
Yeah, and that's a.
And then, and at the end of the day, I mean, that's what we, that's what we needed. We needed you to comply with the standards, period. And to have that communication. And we're finally seeing some of that and I hope it continues.
Right. That's the big thing is if it continues, when, it's not if, it's when.
When.
It's, it's too loud that they shut down when they say they're going to. That's the next step.
Nobody wants to go through this again.
No, no.
Nobody.
Right. I mean, ultimately, the, the noise was the problem. The, the, hey, we don't have a problem. And then, you know, the only response from the city was, hey, use an engineering firm to, to resolve this issue. Um if that wouldn't be there, like in the future, you know, why, you know, that probably wouldn't have been pushed if it would have been, you know, dealt with right away.
Right. I mean, they, they had OEM engineered this or whatever for you guys or whatever, right?
Yeah, or the, this.
The sil- new silencer?
Yeah, they, well, yeah, they, yeah, they, I guess they would be the engineer of it, yeah.
So I mean, I guess in a way, they did it not with exactly who we set. Just as long as they follow through. And that, and that was our condition, I think.
Okay. Anything else for Matt?
Just a quick question. So is the silencer, is the silencer bigger? Is it different or?
It's considerably bigger. Um yeah, it sticks, it sticks up. I guess I don't have a finished picture of it sitting in the stack there. Um yeah, it, it sticks up considerably higher. Um and it is, it's, it's wider, I guess, each way. I don't know how to do a cube, but this way and this way is wider, you know. Um so yeah, it's considerably bigger. Um like I said, the, the two sides uh be the east and west side there. Um so they are bolted on so you can take the bolts off to, to get at the inside, to get at the components inside. Uh and there's still more, there's still steps that we're going to do. Uh that pipe out there still needs to be wrapped. We still plan on wrapping the pipe. That is something that came from Joe. Joe brought up that idea and we are uh, we, we're on that one. You can see out of the, the white building, uh that hole hasn't been uh completely sealed up yet there. Ambient noise from the motor coming out there as well.
Uh there was actually two, two or three openings on the uh side of the concrete building was.
The concrete building, I believe Seth filled in today, you know. But uh, yeah, they, there's, 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 there's openings where a pipe is going through. It isn't completely sealed. And uh Joe came out and he said, you know what? You pulled the insulation away from it, so now you just got a piece of tin there. It's like light bulb. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, this is stuff like, that's right, I, this is stuff that, you know, I would be all over something like this on a personal level with, with my employment. Uh one thing I would, I would note is the, the extra height of the unit um will, will add back pressure to the fan, which will, in this case, uh that fan with vibration is likely that it was being overworked, so that would help uh potentially with the, with the noise, back pressure on it.
Uh Mr. Mayor, if I will.
Yes.
Um I guess uh we would like some clarification from you and Northland as to what your authority is. Um and whether we should be communicating just with you or should I be communicating, communicating with our attorney?
Well, I know you got a letter from our, from my attorney saying that you can communicate with me. If it's a legal issue, in other words, uh, you know, one of those uh taking us, uh, you know, to court or something like that, she wants to be CC'd on that. Other than that, you can, you can talk to me. Josh is still a contact. It's just I am here readily available. Josh Hallwell and the rest of the Board of Directors aren't.
And, and have they given you any authority at this point to monitor the employee activities?
Actually, I am the right hand of the Board of Directors, so basically I'd be over Seth and the employees that are there.
Uh just so you're aware, that one of the city's perceptions has been that um there's been a lack of supervision on the ground at the plant. Uh for example, uh when it was determined that uh the working conditions inside the plant were uncomfortably hot, uh solution was to roll open the big door. And rolling open the big door allowed a lot more noise to spill out into the neighborhood. So supposedly, we were told, Northland uh told the employees, don't open that door anymore. Well, the door kept getting opened. And so, again, I just want you to be aware of that. The city's perception is that uh there's a bunch of uh Indians running around over there with no chief.
Well, that's, that's not the case. Uh Seth is the plant manager over there. He's the operations manager. And uh there has been some changes uh on the per, on the staff there. Um but yes, uh I had heard some of the horror stories and, 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 and uh have been keeping an eye on it. And eh, for that matter, anybody has any questions, concerns or anything, feel free to reach out to me. I know, it's, I'm always available. Or I'll try to make myself available. Wife and kids might say no, but.
Were, were those daytime things or was that uh end of the evening, the uh?
I think it was at night.
So actually at night, so.
Hey, anything else for Matt? Thank you very much. Appreciate your update. Uh Chief Pedersen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to be short and sweet. Uh I think everybody got the statistics again. Um we're still higher numbers than we were last time this year. Uh if anybody had any questions on any cases that stuck out, um you sure could ask away. Uh we're still working on some houses um in the city limits that are kinda in disrepair. And I've had a chat with um Attorney Arneson, just in the sense of what kind of as far as addressing some of those houses that have ill of paint falling off and soffits that are, you know, rotten and breaking and shingles that are falling apart. Um we're looking at some of that under the zoning rules and regulations and trying to set some type of a letter together that we would send out to the homeowners through possibly the um city administration rather than the police department. And that would set a process and then a follow-up with enforcement. So kinda to address what you were talking about, Rich, with the um the few houses that we've identified in town that are. Yeah, in need of some attention.
Yeah.
Um the really good news is the eight hundred megahertz tower got switched on on Friday.
Nice.
And we have penetration throughout the city, um, into the buildings that are, uh, that it's great. So, I say thank you.
Have you tried the school yet, basement?
Well, the, what ha- what has happened now is the school still has the BDA.
Ah.
And that is still on. So Donnie with Alpha Wireless wants to come out, pull the plug on it, and I wanna be with him. Cause I, I want absolute certainty that that school is covered. And then, if that's covered with the, just the antenna and they don't need that BDA, then I guess they're gonna have some other negotiations with maybe Winthrop Schools or, um, possibly buying it or.
Oh, okay.
Moving it on someplace else where it could be of some benefits. So.
Does that just, um, help us or does that help outlying areas or other communities?
Everybody. This whole east side of the county, it's gonna, it's gonna help a great deal.
Wow, good.
Uh, what they're doing with them is they're, it's kinda like a cellphone antenna where if you have three antennas in an area, it always, your cellphone always bounces on the next one that you're coming up to and drops one. Um, so they connect all of these, so it can connect with us, La Sure, uh, Bisque, uh, it can go up to Carver. Depending on where the signal's the strongest or where you're located out of. So, it, it's really gonna help the area.
Good, good.
So, I think the deputies should notice it quite a bit.
Yeah.
Outlying areas and low spots and everything too.
Well, thank you, yes.
Does work in your office?
Yes.
Attorney Arneson's office?
Oh, I'll have to stop over there tomorrow.
Well, thank you, Chief, for your part in pointing it out that we needed it.
Well, it.
You know, that's, uh.
It was a, definitely a safety issue, but, um, it's working now, that's all we gotta say.
Good.
Uh, as far as Northland Dryan, I think Matt, uh, kinda covered what we've been dealing with. And we have been working very closely with them, trying to mitigate the sound and give them the information as quickly as we can. Uh, we still have our Excel spreadsheet that's shared on a Google document that, um, anytime that we have a reading, I'd call up Matt, tell him there's an update on it, and he can see what's there. Uh, our communication back and forth is once they get their device, they would maybe continue doing the same thing so that we can kinda track that too. I think the advantage of that is gonna help them determine what cycle they might have as the, the repair needs to happen. Cause it's inevitable it's gonna happen. That silencer is gonna be a continual clogging and maintenance nightmare, I would guess. So, if they can get the dates down as to how many before they need the next new one, I think it'll benefit us all. Our sound statistics that came back from MPC, like I said, they were under fifty. There was one that was fifty point one. And I just was like, you know, we're not gonna get into that argument. Um, you know, so in all technical aspects of it, they're really good. Uh, there's different measurements that we've gotten. We've been showing readings. Some of them have been like, uh, fifty or forty, forty-four and forty-five. So, he's giving you the general area, but there have been some lower readings too that have been based on weather. So I think they do have some room for, for movement in there. Um, the T twenty-one, so the Lions Club is sponsoring this vaping that's gonna be coming up. It was on the announcements. Uh, Brett, who is putting that on, he's the one that came here and talked to you guys a little about the T twenty-one and the vaping things that we've got going on in the community and the school as well. So, on the topic of that T twenty-one, Ross and I have also talked a little bit about it, and we're gonna look at some other, some other, uh, ordinances that are out there. And just to clarify, as I'm bringing that up, um, I'm not bringing it up in the sense that I think we need to limit licenses through the state or through the city. Say the, uh, Quick Shop, if somebody were to be buying that, I don't think that a tobacco license needs to be axed off of it. All we're looking for is support in increasing the age of the person buying it to be twenty-one. So, just to clarify that, if we are able to get that presented to you within the next couple of council meetings, um, Ross?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, also covers, uh, agenda item thirteen. Finished business, discussion regarding head shops in Arlington. Um, uh, I think there is a general concern about vaping and, um, the ability of younger people to get vaping equipment. Um, I did check with the League of Cities. Uh, no cities so far, uh, uh, in, in their understanding, has passed any ordinance specifically focused on limiting the, the, uh, spread of the vaping equipment. Uh, a number of cities are discussing it. Um, as we are, uh, but the league doesn't have a nice canned ordinance for us to consider. They did, uh, interestingly suggest to me that there is a, um, a, a group at William Mitchell Law School that, uh, is seriously studying this issue. And I haven't had a chance to dis- discuss it with them yet, but I do plan to contact them and see what they're coming up with. It sounds like they're focused on the same concerns that we are. It's some kind of a health initiative at William Mitchell, Health Law Initiative. Uh, so I will check into that and report back. Uh, but, uh, if we were to, uh, let's say, uh, uh, limit, uh, point of sale for vaping products, uh, we would have to approach it the same way as, as similar issues. As I've mentioned to the council in the past, um, the courts have said constitutionally, uh, we can't just prohibit certain businesses that are otherwise legal and put a glass dome over the whole city. We can't just have a, a blanket prohibition. What we can do is, you know, everyone's kinda playing a little game here, there's no question about it, including the courts. But what we can do, for example, is, uh, say, uh, for exam- uh, what, what, what the courts have approved in similar situations, um, you know, liquor licensees, uh, you know, houses of ill repute of various kinds, um, uh, that you can draw a radius around, uh, schools and around churches, around other areas where youth are known to congregate. And so, for example, if in a small town you say, uh, no such vaping, uh, uh, sales within two thousand foot radius of the school grounds, well, that covers a pretty wide swath in a town of our size. And, um, many years ago, this predates, I think, everybody on the council except city attorney. Um, there was, uh, a number of years ago, they had a nude dancing operation at the New Yorker in Green Isle. And, uh, we attempted to prohibit it altogether, found out the courts would not favor that. But, uh, we used kind of a roundabout, uh, procedure to discourage it and eventually it went away.
Went to Nicklet.
Yes. And, uh, Arlington, uh, you know, uh, went into emergency mode. And, uh, we passed a, an ordinance that prohibited, well, wasn't exactly nude, but almost nude dancing within a certain radius of various, uh, institutions like, uh, school, church, et cetera. And the result of all those radii within the city was that, yes, courts, we, we do allow nude dancing in Arlington, but only in these corners of town, which happen to be, you know, empty farm fields. So, we accomplished what we wanted and we're still considered legal. So, that's the approach that I think we'll ultimately be discussing here in Arlington, if we want to try and, uh, you know, put a curb on, on the sale of vaping products.
So be, go on the same route we did with the sex offenders, same type avenues.
And that is the more recent version. You're exactly right. Of the same concept, yes.
Just, just to touch that, as, they're two separate issues. The T twenty-one is totally separate. Um, the, the vaping products and the head shop items. Man, look it up on the internet sometime and then see what kind of items are at there. They got some funky names for things.
There's some wild stuff there, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but what it comes down to is they're products that are used to ingest or smoke, um, marijuana and things of the like.
Whatever concoctions they can come up with.
So one, one proposed ban would be on that paraphernalia type equipment?
Head shop type stores, storefronts, which would be vaping.
The other one is the T twenty-one aspect.
And that same type of thing is kinda what we're talking about. I think we'd be creating a, a new set of standards for, uh, for.
See, I, I was talking with somebody about this and my personal opinion is, is I personally support that cause I, I don't smoke, I don't use it, I don't want my kid to do it either. Um, but he, he shared a, a different point of view as to, you know, eighteen years old, they can, I can go into the army, but you, I can't use something that's legal. Uh, whether it be a vaping product or a, or a tobacco product and.
But the vaping products would fall under the tobacco side of things, which would be the T twenty-one.
Yeah.
So that, and, and that's getting to be, um, at, at least in Minnesota, it's a.
Potentially statewide, right?
Yeah, yeah, the state is even looking at moving in and just saying, yep, that's gonna be mandatory type thing. Um, but with the legalization or consideration of illegal, legalizing marijuana, um, you've got CBD oils that are hemp product THC with low levels. But a lot of them are not monitored, so there's really no set standards on where they, what they are, what's in them. So we're seeing people that are, you know, getting CBD oils, possessing them, possessing them and using them, whether it's ingesting or rubbing it on them. And that along, that goes along with some of these head shops. So, I, I just looked at it as, you know, i- if as a council we wanted to look at, do we want a shop to come into town and set up downtown and the potential of clientele that come to buy their pipes and different.
So two separate issues. So we could do something on the, on the, uh, head shop, separate from the, the T twenty-one part.
Well, I, I'm curious, what exactly is the fear with the possibility of a head shop opening on, on Main Street? What's the concern?
Um, if you go to someplace and you see a tattoo shop, do you see different, um, clientele that stand outside?
Well, see, here's the thing though. Um, I've lived in urban areas most of my adult life. And probably most of that time, the majority of that time, I've lived within one or two blocks of a head shop.
Okay.
And since I don't personally use anything that you would purchase at a head shop, I tended to forget about them. Because there isn't clientele that congregate outside and, um, I guess I'm, my concern isn't specifically for head shops. I don't really care about them. But my concern is when we start passing ordinances against legal businesses, what are the parameters? Where do we, where do we put the brakes on that?
Yep. And I throw it out there just as, uh, we should talk about it kinda thing. I, I don't have a strong stance one way or the other, other than when I was in, uh, the Mall of America. And, you know, you walk by certain stores, there's certain elements that come from different stores. And it doesn't mean people are all bad that smoke marijuana or that use that. I, I don't have a judgment one way or another of it. But it certainly brings out a different type of clientele, different, um, hours of service and business. And it seems like a lot of times when you have drug activity, drug use, and this glassware stuff, like the bongs that they're showing. I mean, it's just, it, it's what we find every time we make a traffic stop and we find meth. You know, so it, it's one of those things that just kinda perpetuates activity. And Arlington's a small town. I'm just throwing it out there. Do we wanna look at this and see, you know, it's a decision that needs to be made in a, a, a group, so.
Wasn't, there was some concerns as well from, uh, Amy News- Newsom?
Correct.
Correct. Pri- prior to this, when we were looking at, uh, I think the, the language on the, uh, ordinance, the, the second reading, you know, the language on the ordinance was maybe a little bit too vague where it went beyond the vaping products and the, the drug paraphernalia into more of the tobacco. So basically what happened was we tabled it at a prior meeting and it's, it's been left there. It hasn't been addressed. And it basically, unless someone brings it up, it will die on the line there, so.
That was a temporary moratorium on establishment of.
A new business.
New business.
Yeah, so someone would have bought Quick Shop.
Which he thought.
They questionably could maybe have not have sold cigarettes.
That's right.
Correct.
And we can't put that restriction out. Even if you don't like them, I mean, there's other people who do.
The T twenty-one would, would, would impact, um, the current local, the current businesses.
Sure.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be able to sell their tobacco cigarettes to somebody through twenty-one.
We, we have to have a different, that ordinance would have to be changed.
And then it would impact all and not just one.
One, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Equally felt across the country.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to, to make a historical comment, in my age, it seems like those are the only comments I have. You're exactly right. Uh, and in fact, this came out during the Vietnam War. The age of adulthood was twenty-one in most states. And until you were an, an adult, twenty-one, uh, you couldn't do many things. Buy tobacco, you couldn't vote, but you could go and die for your country in Vietnam. And so there was a terrific pressure to change that. Unfortunately, what they did is they just dropped the age of adulthood down to eighteen. And all these other laws dropped with it. The drinking age and all these other things. Well, and of course, what we saw was, uh, when, when, when those availabilities dropped down to age eighteen, they were dropping down to the high school crowd. The eighteen-year-olds who hadn't graduated yet and the eighteen-year-olds who still had a lot of buddies in high school. And so there was a lot of perceived, uh, social ills to that. And so gradually they adjusted some of this. For example, drinking age back up to twenty-one. Well, now they're talking about tobacco up to twenty-one. And, um, in some ways, we're reverting back to the good old days.
Pretty Vietnam.
But if that's on a state level, we wouldn't have to do anything. I mean, it would be out of our hands.
And that's another point, uh, I think we haven't mentioned yet tonight. The state legislature is talking about doing this. And if they do, it takes the burden off of us.
Sure.
Yeah, and my conversation with this gentleman was like, I was, I fully, I personally fully support it. And he shared another side of it to me that was, you know, like, okay, well, can I really do that?
I think the T twenty-one side of it is intended more along the vaping things, the vaping topic. Because the tobacco companies are coming back just full, have esteem, hitting young kids with, oh, this tastes good, it's bubblegum flavor, it's great, it's.
Yeah.
You know, so they're getting kids hooked on this. And if you talk to the kids.
Well, they're losing, they're losing their tobacco sales, so they're gonna gain it back the other way.
There's kids as young as fourth grade that are doing, that they.
Yeah, you'd be shocked if you knew how young kids were.
Right. So, I mean, and, and then in high school, middle school and high school, it's even worse. I mean, fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the kids.
So I, I see a trend in the increasing the age to twenty-one in hopes of what you're saying to minimize the access or the availability to the younger crews. If they want it, they're gonna find it, um.
Right.
Yep.
And they do.
Well, yeah, somehow they're getting it already because the age is not, you know, fourth grade.
You can outlaw marijuana, it doesn't get rid of marijuana.
Yep.
You can outlaw alcohol, you don't get rid of alcohol.
Well, there's still, still discussion about, still discussion about CBD oil in the state of Minnesota. It has THC in it.
Well, you can't, if you're a commercial driver, you can't be taking CBD, just in case.
And it, it causes a ton of different problems ac- across the board, cause you can bring it in from someplace else, but possessing it here's still illegal technically. And until that gets sorted out in the legislature, we've got a mess across the board. I've got a dog that smells marijuana. It could be, it could be legal tomorrow and then my dog's worthless.
Is that CBD oil, is that, is that legal for cancer patients in the state of Minnesota?
In Minnesota, uh, THC is only legal under medical.
Or pain control? Okay, under medical.
Medical permission.
I thought it was legal under medical.
Yep. Anything else, as far as anything else, um, no, I don't think I have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
No ordinances tonight, resolutions, sixty-one dash twenty nineteen, uh, resolution dealing with the joint powers agreement from the state of Minnesota with the city.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we have a contract with the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension to utilize the, uh, restricted access computer system they have for, uh, handling criminal prosecutions. It's a system in which we keep records of, um, uh, past, uh, It's a system in which we keep records of, um, uh, past, uh, criminal behavior. Also, uh, charging out, um, if the, uh, police department issues a citation, it's done through that system. If I draft what's called a long form complaint for a DWI case, it's through that system. Um, and it is restricted access, you have to have an agreement with the BCA to use it. We have a, an agreement that's five years old, uh, they renew every five years. It so happens that the timing is such that, uh, as you know, we're contracted for the county attorney's office to take over city prosecutions January first, and that's also when this agreement is due to be renewed. And so we're both renewing it for another five years and also switching it over to the county attorney's office. So that's the gist of the resolution.
I'll introduce resolution sixty one twenty nineteen, approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement with the city of Arlington on behalf of the city attorney and police department.
I'll second it.
Resolution sixty one dash twenty nineteen introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Haddelstein. A resolution approving state of Minnesota joint powers agreements with the city of Arlington on behalf of its city attorney and police department. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Haddelstein.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Batch.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution sixty two dash twenty nineteen, uh, authorizing the issuance, sale, delivery of a hundred thousand dollar general obligation equipment certificate.
If I may again, Mr. Mayor, uh, council will recall that MVEC offered to give the city an interest free loan. Uh, and, uh, this is to fund, uh, the new streetlight system. We were originally approaching it, uh, at their suggestion as a lease, uh, where we would be, in essence, leasing the equipment from them, uh, until it was paid off and then it would belong to us. They kicked back later on and indicated that for some accounting reason, it didn't work. And so we took a step back and, uh, uh, through, uh, uh, the city administrator and, and Shannon Sweeney, our financial advisor, uh, the suggestion came up to use an equipment certificate. Uh, this is a special kind of a mini bond, is the way you can think of it. Uh, it's called the equipment certificate because it's allowed by the state for certain types of capital expenditures, most often fire trucks. Or, or street sweepers, things of that nature, uh, where the city, uh, wants to borrow the money, but, uh, doesn't have a larger bond pending to rule it into. And so, uh, with, uh, some, uh, documentation provided by Shannon Sweeney, I made an alteration, uh, of this to, um, uh, fit with our situation. So the resolution is to approve this equipment certificate. The terms of it are a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we, uh, had a estimate of the cost of the project of something over ninety thousand, but asked, uh, uh, MVEC if we could build in a contingency amount, uh, in case, you know, the cost of the equipment or the installation is over the estimate. And they agreed fairly readily to up to an even hundred thousand. And so that makes it nice and neat. Uh, under this equipment certificate, we would be repaying them at, uh, ten thousand a year for ten years. And again, no interest, that's the important part. Um, so, uh, that is what the resolution is for, is to approve the, uh, equipment certificate.
I'll introduce resolution sixty two twenty nineteen, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of a one hundred thousand dollar general obligation equipment certificate to Minnesota Valley Electrical Corp.
Second.
Resolution sixty two dash twenty nineteen introduced by council member Cowell, second by council member Batch. It is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of a hundred thousand dollar general obligation equipment certificate, series twenty nineteen A. Any discussion?
We, we, I had heard that we had the money to pay for it, is that a fair statement or not? Like, do we have the hundred thousand to pay for the lights and just pay it off?
Well, I always have reserves, I guess, I mean.
Taken out of reserve. Oh, it's a general, like, so it's not like line item already?
No.
Okay, alright, that was all.
We, we've got the twenty five percent matching amount.
Okay.
Further questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Haddelstein.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Batch.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution sixty three dash twenty nine, approving a, uh, application for lawful gambling permit, Pheasants Forever on February eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll introduce resolution, uh, sixty three twenty nineteen, approving the application for lawful gambling for Pheasants Forever on February eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Resolution sixty three dash twenty nineteen introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Gilman. Resolution, uh, is approving the application for lawful gambling permit for Pheasants Forever, uh, the event being held on February eighth, twenty twenty. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, vote by roll call, council member Batch.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Haddelstein.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. And lastly, resolution sixty four dash twenty nineteen, resolution approving the conditional use permit for roofing material for a structure on one oh two Main Street, west of the central business district. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Council members, please see attached the, uh, memo from Cynthia S. Mistrack. The, and Michelle, feel free to chime in at any points here, the planning committee did take a look at this. Uh, this would be a change from past practice in that this building, which is located in the B two central business district, previously has not allowed, uh, this type of roof, of roofing. Uh, an exposed fastener, twenty gauge steel, uh, is what is being proposed. However, there were a number of, uh, uh, points made, including the fact that this building is set back further from Main Street and that the, uh, advancements that they have made in this type of roofing has come a long way in terms of, uh, the, uh, color fading less and it being more durable. And also, uh, not allowing, uh, water to get in. So the committee was kind of, uh, uh, mixed on the opinions, but, uh, I thought that this, although it is a, a change to what has been approved in the past, that this would be something that the, uh, city council could consider for approval. Michelle, is there anything?
No, I, the, the main, one of the main reasons or whatever, uh, actually, there's a few, you had, you had, you had a few of them. Uh, the exposed fasteners are a third of the cost, um, of the roof compared to, uh, concealed fa- fastener roof. Um, the product's come a long ways in the last ten, fifteen years. Um, uh, color fast or to have it retain the color. Uh, I think there's like a forty or fifty year warranty on this stuff that he's planning on putting on the building, which I don't think there was that before. I think they deteriorated the, the color really fast. Um, the other piece was the building is set off of Main Street.
Hmm.
Even though it has a Main Street address, it's pretty much on Adams instead of on Main Street.
It's probably about a hundred, a hundred feet back, probably.
There's two different addresses in this memo, one is one oh two and the other is two oh one, and I was a little confused.
So it's one oh two, and that was a typo, so that was corrected at our meeting, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, so, uh, those were the main, those were the main, um, decisions. Uh, the main reasons why we, and I believe it passed.
And are all the improvements in the product, is that kind of industry wide? So if another business opted for this type of roofing, they wouldn't have to buy specifically the exact same brand or whatever? I mean, this, it's just, it's related more to.
Yeah, no. Okay, it's just come the technology, right?
Finishes are so much better, paint is so much better. I mean, who would have thought of putting on a black roof on a steel building years, you know, thirty years ago? You wouldn't do it, cause anything darker than, uh, gray would fade in two or three years. So it's come a long, long way.
When Dollar General came to town and they built their building, I believe they built it with exposed fastener on the outside. Did the city make them take that all down and replace it with?
Yes, on the sidewalls.
So we made them replace every bit of it?
Yes.
Out the edge of town.
Mm-hmm.
But now it's okay on Main Street. I'm just, I'm wondering where our conflict comes in here.
It's, it's okay on the roof, they have exposed fasteners on the roof at, at Dollar General. But being it set back, I think that was a determining factor. It wasn't a building, it was right up to the sidewalk, it's by, back quite a ways.
Who's gonna notice it on the roof, I think, was the comment.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would have noticed it out there on the highway either.
On, on the siding?
Yeah. You had to drive by and really look to be, cause I remember that when it was going on, I wasn't on the council. And I looked and thought, I can't even see them, and they're gonna make them replace all of this?
Well, and that was just a, uh, condition of their conditional use permit. You know, so they, yeah. And they agreed to it when it was issued, so.
So if one of the determining factors here is the fact that it's set back, what about businesses in the future that are not set back? Is that gonna create a conflict?
Um, I, so one building was just redone with the same type of roof, it was R and R.
Oh, okay.
Right? R and R, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yep, yep, they have exposed fasteners.
They, they just, they just changed that out, uh, last year.
Yep.
Now did R and R, I see it as, uh, conditional use permit for theirs.
No, I, I believe they had that type of roof on before, so they replaced it.
No, they built a whole new.
They built a whole new building.
The whole front piece got demolished.
No, it's a roof on the big part, it's the metal roof on the big part, it was just replaced with a, a new steel roof.
Probably to match the, the addition, alright?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So to answer your question, I think there would probably, it's, you know, it would be based on the conditions of that building, any other building on Main Street.
Mm-hmm, so it'd have to be a case by case.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. There was some reluctance in bending on this, but I was at the meeting, so I listened carefully. Yeah, someone want to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce resolution, uh, sixty four dash twenty nineteen, uh, approving conditional use permit for roofing materials for a structure at one oh two West Main Street.
Second.
That was Joel, right?
Yep.
Okay, resolution sixty four dash twenty nineteen introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Morgan. It is a resolution approving the conditional use permit for roofing material for a structure at one oh two Main Street, west in the central business district. Further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Haddelstein.
No.
Council member Batch.
Yes.
Council member Cowell.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, one vote against, resolution passes. Just in a related note, I questioned, because I've been driving past this buil- the building adjacent to the building in question here, it's a little shed, sort of right at the end of it. I, uh, and I noticed that the property line included that building. I, um, questioned the owner, Andrew Frieden, and he said in his process of buying that, the land, or the, um, boundary was changed. And that little building, which is in really rough shape, was actually bought by, um, um, afterburner. And they are gonna demolish it. And so, it's, uh, it was a real rough shape, and I was concerned that he would, he would probably, uh, not be doing any fix up to that one, but it's being taken care of by another party.
Didn't they get this property for knocking down that elevator?
Hmm, it's been through a number of hands since then.
Oh, it switched hands from the original, yeah.
He purchased it from Dennis, um.
Nissen.
Nissen, and gave it.
I think Nissen was the one that knocked it down.
Yeah, there you go, his brother did, uh, Mike, and then Dennis Nissen eventually became owner. Alright, uh, unfinished business, I, item number, let's see, we took care of number eleven, took care of the Northland Drying. Anything to add on Northland Drying, I think we pretty much exhausted that?
I guess it just, uh, is it concluded that, uh, Northland Drying can continue to operate? Or I think that's why.
There's really nothing we can do, I mean, from what, from what way Ross made it sound, it was never really technically legally agreed to.
Technically, we didn't have, we thought, but technically it wasn't.
Right, so.
As long as they're quiet and there's peace in the community, yay.
Right.
That's all I can say.
Alright, I mean, it'd be nice to evaluate the moving forward.
Right.
I would caution relying on somebody to take a meter, you know, that's, that's like.
Oh, one of their employees, yeah.
Clean up his mess in the living room and, you know, they do it sometimes and then they don't, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Ultimately, uh, you know, if he's going to be the spokesperson and he's gonna respond to, uh, Chief Patterson when he calls him and then they deal with it, that's ultimately what you would want.
Yep.
What if they don't?
Right.
John, are you gonna continue to take readings yourself at all, or are you done doing?
We still have our city-owned rights.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think as long as we're, we're, we start hearing it as loud as, or getting louder, then we'll start doing our own readings and we'll bring it to his attention right away. Um, I would, from what I've heard about this agreement that he's talked about, I would strongly encourage it and appreciate it, so that they're held to something.
You mean the agreement, the, the item he mentioned about their program going forward?
What it sounded like is, yes, their attorney would like to present something back to the council that says, we will do A, B, and C, and then I'd like the council to turn around and say, and do D, B, and F.
Right.
Yeah.
Hopefully there may be some agreement. Their whole, their whole intention behind this is, they don't want me calling MPCA on them and firing up what we did last week. And if he agrees to something, then that would be the understanding that I don't go straight to MPCA.
Good.
We try to handle it in-house, cause I, I do think that that was a good effect, uh, having them send that last letter with the most recent violations.
Ross, is there any motion or anything that you want from the council at this point, or are we fine just to proceed with the understanding that, uh, Matt Nelson will be coming to a future council meeting with the document?
Well, perhaps the council could authorize me to communicate with their attorney again, uh, asking her about this new plan of action and how soon we can expect it.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Motion by council member Haddelstein, second by council member Cowell to authorize city attorney, uh, Arnesson to be in contact with the Northland Drying attorney inquiring about their long range plans.
I think he referred to it as like a noise action plan or something.
Action plan, okay.
Their noise.
I ask that that doesn't just include noise.
Noise, smell, and.
Articulates.
Out of their exhaust stacks.
Yeah.
All three, yeah.
Yeah, okay, is that understood, everyone? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carried. Okay, we talked about the head shops, uh, item fourteen of business, approved in aye, adding additional firefighters of the thirty member limit.
Yeah, sure, so at the fire committee meeting, um, they're at the thirty lim- limit now, there's one that's probably not gonna make it. And they, they do have two applicants in-house and they haven't advertised, I think John said they would have to advertise, um, if, if we wanted to go this route, so there's a potential we can get more, but he sees next year or two, quite a few people retiring, so, but just wanted approval to go over the limit for probably a short time.
How much does that cost the city?
I mean, it's, I don't, I mean, you pay them for the training.
And turnout gear, and.
Right.
And additional staff, but there's, a surplus is what you would want, you want people ready to go.
Well, that would be nice, that would be nice, because we're, if we're ever anything, we're short.
You don't have to pay them, but if you're at your limit, you can always pick from them once you.
How soon do we pay them into their retirement account, year one, or is there a probationary period?
I think, I think.
Ten, you have to be tenured, don't you?
I think it's after year one, because you have to meet all your training requirements.
Okay.
Each year, you have to.
Yeah, you have to do all that stuff, I don't think they give any money until they do that, because there's.
So, first, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, turnout gear, I mean, if we hire thirty-one, that's one extra set, if we had a limit.
Yeah, I think we are, I think we, I think we did this a few months ago, if I, or maybe it was a little longer than that, when they had five applicants. I think we did this before, did we not?
Well, they weren't over the thirty limit, limit, were they?
No.
I thought that was putting them over.
No, they were.
No, I.
I think they, weren't they at twenty-six?
Yeah, I think so.
Or I can't remember the exact number, but I thought it was twenty, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember ever doing this, as far as, I didn't know there was a limit until I saw this on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna put a limit, I mean, they have two applicants right now, so.
Yeah, that's a tough part.
How many spots open do they have?
Um, I think they have twenty-nine active, and one that's probably gonna fall off.
So, there'll be twenty-eight, and then the two that are waiting, it'll be thirty, then they wouldn't need them.
The two would fill up.
Right, but.
Well, I mean, if one retires, then, or one's done.
I think.
Yeah, but.
Then they're not over.
Then additional cost isn't gonna be there either, though.
Yeah, I think we'd be smart to go to the thirty, if we got people willing to do this, our battle is always, as with the ambulance service, what are we gonna do to get people? Now we have two people sitting here wanting to get on.
And, and.
And if it does cost the city fifteen hundred bucks, I'd rather have the extra firefighter.
Well, I guess I thought I, so, we're not at thirty, then?
I th- I think we're at twenty-nine or thirty, I can't.
So, I mean, if you're at the limit, then you don't have a space to fill.
Right.
If we're gonna keep the limit, if we're not at thirty, then by all means, go to the limit.
One of, one of John's other points is, or that he made, was, um, there's a lot of people that are, that could retire at any time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, so there's this big gap, there's a lot of people there, and then there's a lot of people here. So, once this group leaves, there isn't a whole lot for leadership and people who have a lot of experience, and so, bringing more people in and getting, you know, more people experience, I mean, I, I, I don't think we should turn away people, like.
Well, that's why we created that retirement fund different, to keep some of those older people around a little longer.
Mm-hmm.
But sooner or later, some of those are going to leave.
And that did work, too.
Yeah, that worked, but, but probably isn't gonna work forever, though.
Immediately. No, no.
It's not, it's gonna be done soon.
So, Adam, are these individuals?
I don't have the applicants, I don't know who they are.
Did, did they have to go through training, or have they already been trained?
No, they'll have to go through training, they'll have to get accepted to the fire department by us, I assume, here, at some point.
So, could it be kind of a situation where we go ahead and approve above that number, but we still, you know, once these others re- retire, these new people just step right in at that right time, so we don't have the additional cost for more.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Equipment.
Because if there are twenty-eight or twenty-nine now, and one is maybe dropping off, two new ones starting.
How soon can you anticipate people dropping off, though? I mean, if you've got two people that are just kinda up there hanging, how long are they gonna wait?
There must be one that's, must be. There must be one that's large.
Well, yeah.
Training takes.
This, this one is probably not gonna make the training requirements.
Yeah.
Um, a new one, and then, the, yeah, the people, the, um, people that have been there for twenty years, they can retire at any day, and get their full retirement, so you have no idea.
Yeah.
I would imagine they'd wait until they get there, since we passed this bonus, I would imagine they'd wait till they got that.
Right.
Um, and then.
They get that January one?
Yeah, and then, I was talking about later, but if, if, we don't know, if the medicals increase, there's gonna be a lot that go.
That's their fear, that it is, the medicals are gonna increase.
Because there's, yeah, I mean, there's, everybody's over their percentages, but there's some that are twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, and you'll be over twenty. If you have five or six medicals that they can't make during the day, and all of a sudden they're under twenty, they're not gonna stay around. So.
I, I, we have a limit for a reason, and I guess that's.
I, I agree. I think they can have them in, like, it's my opinion, they can have them in kind of the back burner, but, we're not that big of a community, I think Henderson has twelve firemen, is what I heard, so, I mean, it's, um.
It's a struggle to get firefighters, so, I mean, we're doing really good with a full. Chief's doing a great job, the rest of the fire department's doing a great job, having a full staff, but we have a full staff, so that's good.
Is there a motion to approve or deny?
So, just a clarifying question, can the fire department put these individuals through training? Or no, they're, they're maxed out, they can't?
That's, well, yeah.
Well, for sure, one, we gotta put one through training.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
For sure.
Yeah.
If, if that's the way we go, I mean, uh, there's training, there's bonus, sign-on bonuses, stuff like that, you can't put people through that if you're not gonna allow them on the fire department.
Yeah, but do it to the one, so if we have twenty-nine, pick one and basically hire them.
When a new firefighter, um, comes on, do they need, um, brand-new turnout gear for themselves?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do we have any extra turnout gear, you know, that we could?
I think they usually try to have a spare.
We could go to thirty-one without buying that equipment?
I think that's, they usually have a spare, but I don't know that.
But then, if they have one spare, and we use that up, then we still have to buy a spare, a backup, so we're gonna have to buy turnout gear for the extra guy.
Or gal.
Or gal.
Do we have to decide on this tonight, or can we find out that information?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get, find the numbers out, and the gear.
Motion. Motion table?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchelor, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstead, to table the, um, uh, adding the additional firefighter fighter over the thirty-member limit, to authorize adding. Any other discussion?
Can we get information, though, back, so we can bring it back right away?
Yep, yep, I'll plan on having on, on the next council agenda.
Thank you.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, no, motion carried. Item fifteen, approve promoting Laura Dykoff to Assistant Deputy Clerk Administration, in administration.
Council members, including your packet, was the, uh, job description for the Assistant Deputy Clerk. Uh, it was my oversight that we did not have this approved at the, uh, previous meeting, so I would ask if we can make this, uh, retroactive to that. The Administration Department, uh, is happy to announce that, uh, Amy Newsom just joined us on Friday the fifteenth, and that with that, uh, change came some restructuring within the department, so that Laura Dykoff, who was initially hired as the administrative assistant, is now, uh, going into the position of Assistant Deputy Clerk. Uh, she'll be on a, uh, re-provationary period, uh, before, uh, uh, being recognized as a full-time employee in that position, so, I'm looking for your approval, uh, to go ahead with that, at a current wage of fifteen dollars an hour.
My co-sign will approve promoting Laura Dykoff to Assistant Deputy Clerk, um, in Administration.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchelor, seconded by Councilmember Gilman, to approve Laura Dykoff to the position of Assistant Deputy Clerk in Administration. Is there additional discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item sixteen, approve or deny Arlington Electric rate schedule transmission transformed service policy, is that?
Council members, this is a recommendation that's coming from, uh, MMPA, our, uh, our Electrical, uh, Management Group. Uh, basically, what this is, is, uh, uh, setting up a policy and parameters for, uh, individuals who may wish to generate their own electricity, uh, how they can sell that back, and how the city will address those situations. I believe it'll, it, it won't be terribly likely that we'll be using this, but, uh, um, this is something that, uh, MMPA is recommending that we approve. I did run it by Kurt Court and, uh, Sarah Peterson from Minnesota Valley Electrical Op, and they were in agreement with, uh, going ahead and approving this, so, um, you'll see that in the back, you've got several different, uh, schedules that are listed, that are referenced in the policy. This will be put with our existing, uh, policy for the electrical system.
So, is this replacing an old policy, or updating an old policy, or didn't we have anything?
Did not have anything, this is a new policy that's being added.
Okay.
Does it hinder, uh, people in any way that are looking to, uh, put in a system? I think we just heard, uh, from Kraft that he was, you know, looking at, uh,
Solar.
Some solar, uh, system for his, uh, business.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think what it is, is more so, it's, it's not denying it, but it's setting parameters around which, how the city will address it and deal with it, so it's, it's not saying, no, we won't do any, do it, but it's saying, this is how we're going to, you know, credit you, or, or allow you to, to sell back, and it's dealing with kind of the, setting the rate, um, which is set by MISO in a n- number of different schedules.
Can, can we get some more information, as far, maybe from like, um, Minnesota Valley, or Excel, or something like that, on policies that they have? How they, they do this with their customers?
Okay, inquire with MVEC, is what?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, like, um, standing side by side, I mean, this is MMPS, MMPA, right? That's telling us how they want it structured, whatever, I don't know if it's in the buzz.
Of course, Kurt Court from M- Minnesota Valley Electric did review this.
He did.
So, he's a Minnesota Valley Electric person.
This looks to be a standard rate schedule that the MP, the MMPA group has issued. In my opinion, the city has no option to change it, and therefore, we would recommend that the city accept this, um.
And that's from Kurt, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So, I'm curious, if a customer wants to do this, they incur the entire cost of setting up solar panels, or whatever it is that they're doing, right? There's no incentive for anyone to do this from the, the city, or from?
Not from the city, there's a big federal.
But federal, yeah.
Federal incentive.
Is this something that could, um, be used, you know, I, I would imagine there's a huge expense that is incurred, though, but to offset some of these increasing electric, um, rates for our bigger customers?
You know, I think just like Jim Kraft was here, I think if, uh, if somebody was interested, and they wanted to, to have some, a resource to help them to go down that path of exploring, I think Kim Lilly Vlad, the individual that I referred, uh, Jim to, I think would be more than willing to sit down and talk about, uh, some of those issues, but in terms of, uh, finance, um, financial support, I, I, I guess there again, it would really depend on MMPA. We offer a lot of rebates for different things. Uh, I don't know that we have any sort of rebate set up for something where an individual is looking to maybe replace, well, I, I believe that there would be, if someone was looking to replace, like, baseboard heat, uh, something that's very inefficient, I believe that MMPA would sit down with them, but in terms of doing a solar, uh, I'm not sure that, that they're there for, for the city of Arlington quite yet, so, maybe something in the future, but.
Maybe this is something that we just don't tie ourselves down to right now.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
What is?
It's, it's something we did in Green Island, um, as I understand it, perhaps I don't, but, uh, if someone puts in a solar energy, uh, facility, um, it, it, it has the advantage of cutting down their own grid electric use, so it reduces their electric bill, depending on how much they put in and how successful it is, they may eliminate their electric bill altogether, and can create a surplus, and the surplus is something they would like to then sell, you know, back up into the grid. And that's where we get MMPA saying, wait a minute, boys, it's our grid that you wanna use, so we get to set the rules. You know, do we, do we buy this power back from you, and if so, at what rates? And, um, and, and also they get into technical details that, you know, it, it has to be a compatible hookups, et cetera, et cetera. So, really, I think MMPA drives this whole thing, it's their grid. And, uh, Green Island was Excel, and basically Excel drove the process, saying, yes, we will, you know, buy back some of this excess solar power, but here's the rules under which we're going to do it, period, end of story. And so, the city really didn't have a lot of leeway as to, you know, well, uh, the city's leeway could be, uh, no, we're not gonna let anybody, you know, connect their solar energy, uh, equipment to the grid, period. But if you wanna allow it, then you allow it under the grid's rules.
That's the way I understand it also. Okay, motion one way or the other, please.
I'll make a motion to approve our Arlington Electric rate schedule transmission transformed service policy.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cowal, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstead, to approve the Arlington Electric rate schedule transmission tran- transformed service policy. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Everybody in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, I had a question with the, uh, item from McLeod Cooperative Power that was not approved with the consent agenda. The question is, are we paying them for a completed job at the south edge of town, because that job isn't completed? Um, there are two poles out in the, out in the field, yeah.
That's the Danielson property.
That's the Danielson property, and my question was, they can get them out of there right now, they can still get them out of there, otherwise they're, if they don't get them out of there now, they're gonna be in the way for Danielson's renter next year again.
And they're gonna have to go quicker, and three weeks from now, they aren't getting them.
No, no, I mean, but now they could pull them out yet, so that was my question for not allowing that, and I guess I would just suggest, maybe we can allow the payment of it, contingent upon the fact that they get those poles pulled out of there?
So, we have to pay first?
I think we wa- issue the check and hold the check until they get it.
Yep.
Till they get them out.
Poles are gone, the check's mailed.
But, yeah, I was just trying to figure out, they were, they were wait, they were waiting on the check to pull them out.
No, I mean, it was a contracted job at a set rate, I think, I think it was around fourteen grand to do that.
I would think that they'd want them out of the field, so they could finish plowing that field, and, like you say, next spring, do their planting with all, because, yeah, three weeks from now, they're gonna be there plow time next year.
Uh, Vince Danielson did ask me about it, a month ago, and I said, I knew that the city had contracted to have it done.
Right, okay.
And, and I did just this morning, when I, uh, inquired about that other issue, I did, uh, um, asking about how much a street light would cost, I also inquired about that.
Okay.
Uh, but I did not hear back from them.
Okay.
So, as soon as I hear.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to pay the bill if, um, when they get the work completed.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Batchelor, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstead, to pay, uh, the bill to McLeod County, or McLeod Cooperative Power in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eight cents, contingent upon completion of the work at Henderson Road and County Road seventeen. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. Um, I have two items here. Um, I have two items here, I remember a few months ago, there was a gentleman here from the, uh, Census Bureau, put on a presentation. Was asking for support from the city, asking for a letter of support from the mayor, I have submitted a letter of support, and I have enlisted the services of. Mister Tim Dawson, a resident of Arlington, to, uh, head up the Complete Count Committee. That'll be a committee that deals with notifying, making sure that our public knows that there's a census coming, and, uh, that they are, you know, uh. Give some support to having, like, just, you know, the title of the committee is Complete Count Committee, they don't wanna miss anyone. So it's just more of a, um, uh, PR type, uh, position, and he will enlist other members in the community to assist him. Uh, the other one is, um, I would like the members of the council to, uh, think of people that might. Be interested or approachable to serve on a city committee, um, we do have, for instance, a cemetery committee, we have two vacancies. We also have two people whose terms expire this year, don't know whether they're going to go back on or not. Uh, community center committee, we have, um, three people whose terms expire this year, EDA, uh, one person's term expires. Now, I'm talking about community at large here, not, not council representation. Library committee, we have one, or we have two people whose terms expire, parks committee, three terms expire. Planning and zoning, we have one vacancy currently, and two persons ex- terms expire, um, so I need some help. Just, uh, if, if you know of someone, or you talk to someone that might be interested in serving on a committee, ask them to stop by the city office and pick up an application. And then, uh, generally what I do is pick up those applications sometime in the middle of December, and start calling people, getting commitments, and then. Uh, early in January, we'll put together the, uh, the list of appointments for, for those committees, so I would appreciate that help.
One question.
Yep.
If I talk to somebody, or numerous ones, and they ask if there's pay, is the pay twenty-five dollars per meeting? I don't wanna quote something wrong.
It's twenty, I think, it's twenty even, yep.
Twenty.
It's twenty, okay. Just, I just wanted to verify that, that's all.
And just a question, uh, can an individual be on more than one committee?
Yes, they may.
What did that change?
It never has been.
Isn't it a rule? I think, uh, Mayor Kraft put that into order when he came on.
I'm not sure, but I had, uh, and I can't remember who it was, Jennifer Nessie wanted to, she is on cha- uh, she. Planning and zoning and cemetery, and there are no, there are no rules that says you can't be on multiples.
I think it was.
Will those, will that be in the flyer with like our monthly, uh, electrical bill and stuff?
We'll, we'll put it into the news, into the newsletter, yes.
Is it, is a newsletter, when does that come, I mean, is, is the.
Towards the end of the line.
Is a newsletter for this, for November already being put together, or been put together?
It, it will be, it has been put together, it will be.
We'll get, we need to get that down.
Could we add that in there before the end of this month, I know you, I know you're busy, but that might help.
Yeah, I will let, I will let Amy know.
Help the mayor for sure.
You're gonna reach more people than I know.
Sure, and then we can put it in again in December also.
We'll say Joe says.
That's what I'm gonna tell people, probably send them tomorrow coffee, and I say, Joe said, we need help.
Get a job.
That's gonna reach more people than I know.
And you know, you know what they're gonna say? Joe who?
Exactly.
Joe Schmo.
All right, anything else that needs discussion?
You want committee updates, or?
What's that?
Want committee updates?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, fire committee, I'll try to be quick, um, kinda went over a little bit already, uh, twenty-seven percent is the, the. They asked about turnout gear, June twenty-twenty is the deadline for that, um, and for OSHA. The tanker, uh, scheduled to be pre-built in December, and then they hope to have it April, May. There's some talk about possibly changing those SOGs due to the medicals.
What are the SOGs?
The guidelines.
Oh.
So with the, they're, maybe getting rid of the, yeah, maybe getting rid of the twenty percent, or not including medicals in the twenty percent, that's just some talk.
Standard operating guidelines. Ah, sure.
Yeah, it used to be like thirty percent or something way higher, and then they really bumped it down quite a bit.
Right. Yep.
And it was mainly back then because of the medicals.
Right, so, and then, um, most of the discussion was on the ambulance, and their concern, so it's something they definitely wanna watch.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a medium in February, so they're gonna track from here until then, and see what, see how it goes.
I think we'll all be watching that.
Yeah.
Yep, um, that's that, utility medium, we met quick before, um, the stormwater, uh, increase possibly. Um, see if we can phase it over two years, I guess, potentially, if we can.
Okay, any other?
Police committee, we haven't had any, streets committee, we haven't had any, cable commission, I missed, I was out of state. I do have a question, do we have to have a, are, are our street lights now, if this money's been all approved, are we ready to rock? Or do we need to have another committee meeting to get this going?
I, I think as soon as we, I will send over a copy of the signed, uh, resolution, and then my hope is that they can get us the money, and Kirby can reach out to the. Vendors, you know, our goal was initially to have this done in advance of Arla Dazzler.
By Christmas for Arla Dazzler, the main street.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know that we're going to be able to do that, so, but it will get done, um, the goal is to have.
Main Street.
It happened.
That's not gonna happen that fast.
The goal is to have, uh, contract out the, the lights on Main Street, and then Kirby and Mike will work on the remaining. Uh, lights as they can get them knocked off, so, um. Yeah, I will keep you updated as to how quickly we can get that money and get that.
I just didn't know if there's something else street committee need, I didn't wanna get it delayed because there's something we lacking.
Yeah, nope, everything is, is set to.
Ready to rock.
Set to go, um.
Okay, any other committee meetings to report?
Just a reminder that I think on Thursday, employee relations is.
That's correct.
Getting together, um.
Wednesday.
Or Wednesday, I'm sorry.
So Wednesday, yeah. Wednesday at four?
We're, we're meeting on Thursday, right, six o'clock?
The lost budget thing?
Yeah.
There.
Yep, okay, yep. Yep, I'll make that agenda tonight.
Yeah, I gotta think five this week, it's fun.
Yeah, employee relations, all right, anything else? Motion adjourned.
Second.
Oh.
Nobody, I didn't make the motion, I can't make the motion.
I'll second your motion, Tom.
Tom made it. I am, Batch, meeting adjourned at nine fifty-one.
Wow.
It sounded good.
This is the BCA.
So Thursday works then?
Okay, and it's a resolution, they grabbed it up.
Nope, sounds good, I'll get the agenda put together, and we'll get that set to go, so.
If you can pass it on to Pat to sign. And here's a second copy.
Okay.
One I'll give to the cities file, and one I will email up to them.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too, Laura.
And this is the.
Say hello to Kenny.
Joint Powers Agreement with BCA.
Mm-hmm.
You sign under, I don't know, they did it kinda weird, you sign underneath where your name is typed.
Underneath, all right.
That, uh, keep one and, yep, one back.
Okay, so I need to keep this one, okay.
And this is the, uh, basically it's a confidentiality agreement.
Under your name.
BCA. Same thing under your name.
Yeah.
And those have to be circulated up to the state and back, so the city will get a copy once it's fully signed.
Okay.